T-Town Lake dredging is in front of us. Jacob Road.
This one, this one we acknowledged.
We got a letter from some guy Jake Kopestein.
Can they ever hear him?
I wouldn't read it. Three eight five Keer Street, that's on tonight.
Right, it's also on our, that's on the Nantucket, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, it's on our agenda tonight.
We'll talk about that at the
Yeah.
time of the Where did I see? Ian, are we moving Jacob Road Solar to the end?
Okay.
Oh, yeah, absolutely. We are moving number eight Jacob Road Solar to number thirteen. Yes, by request of the applicant. Alright, we have meaning met, it's from May sixth, twenty twenty four. Any comments, additions, alterations?
None, all good.
Good?
All good.
Counselor?
No, uh, change.
John?
No modifications.
Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Second.
All's in favor.
Aye.
First up, we have Village Traditions. This is a decision statement. Locations one eight two one East Main Street. Good evening, how are you?
Alright, how are you?
Good. Have you had a chance to review the resolution?
We did.
Okay, any issues, comments?
No comments.
Anything from the board?
No.
Counselor?
No, Mr. Chair.
John?
No comments.
That being said, do I have a motion for the resolution proving amended site plan for Mohegan Lake Apartments at Village Traditions?
Motion.
Second.
All's in favor.
Aye.
Best of luck.
Good luck to you.
Thank you.
You too. Alright, next on the agenda, we have SMDL Realty. Also known as Duncan Route two oh two.
Good evening.
How we doing?
Moving Buck Engineering Properties here with the applicant. Robin sent over the draft resolution this morning, had a chance to look through it.
How you doing?
Happy to answer any last minute questions the board may have and if there are no other additional questions, request on behalf of the applicant that the board consider permitting the applicant to begin site work prior to signing of the plans. DEP has approved the project, we're still waiting on the DOT to finalize their approval of the left turn lane and the utility connections within the right of way. But allowing the applicant to begin site work would allow them to bring the site and the building, have them constructed while they wait for those approvals to come to fruition and kind of expedite the process for them.
Any issues with that?
No problem.
Anyone?
Are we satisfied with the site plan and the condition that it's in now? I mean, save for those things.
I don't see Dan.
Well, you're gonna need to have a, the erosion sediment control permit in place. And are you gonna take some, are you gonna remove some trees and so forth?
Yes.
Yeah, so the tree permit, you know, that permit, you'll probably have to have in place. And if you do go forward, I would suggest that a, it's part of the permit, but that a kickoff meeting is conducted with the engineering department, you know, all the usual things that they need to do if you want to give them opportunity to do that in advance of the signed site plan.
You have a sense of the timing of these other aspects of it, of approval?
I wish, I mean, the DOT is very, very difficult to wrangle in and get responses from and approvals from. I have a project I'm working for in Orange County and it's been six months and we're still working on getting approval, but the planning board up there is allowed the applicant to begin site work just because they know that DOT is, they take their time.
I don't, have you seen this memo from the conservation board?
Yes. Yes, they, they informed me that I was, that I was not needed to attend the meeting, I saw the memo. They had requested that we provide different species of evergreen tree in the back, which we provided. They also asked that we look into pervious pavers for the area that's within the wetland buffer. Our onsite soil testing with the DEP and ultimately our stormwater design indicated that the underlying soils aren't permeable. So the stormwater for the project is not using any kind of infiltration practice. So similarly, that kind of ruled out any kind of pervious pavement for this project.
Alright, thanks, that puts the answer to that on the question. There's a memo from DOT, I think you were referring to that from April?
Yes.
With a couple of things that seem need to be cleared up, will that affect going forward with some initial site work on your part? With their approval?
From my understanding and my memory, the comments they had were minor in nature, I know some of the comments they had were regarding the grades into the site.
Yep.
Which won't ultimately affect the first floor elevation of the building or any of the grades around the site. It's gonna be minor modifications to the entrance and exit roads to and from the facility. But the traffic consultant is addressing those at this time.
Are you saying that's an estate property rather than on your property?
Yes, the comments from the DOT are regarding the, the portion of the access roads that are within the right of way.
Is it gonna change any of the openings into your property or?
The latest site plan we have is May eighth, is that what I? John, is that what?
April seventeenth.
April seventeenth? And you don't anticipate any significant changes to that site plan if you get the site, site work underway?
Yeah.
Nah, play by the rules.
I don't have a problem with that, do you?
As long as they don't run into a problem with DOT.
Any, any bonding required? In allowing this to go forward and?
I think they're gonna need, they're gonna need two permits.
Right.
Which you guys are obviously gonna follow up on. Is there bonding at this point?
Usually there's erosion sediment control bond, but you can, you, you can set that number. That amount.
We have to sit down.
So, so we're, we're just waiting for that final approval from the state to sign our plat?
Looks that way.
Yeah.
So the signature on our plat is gonna be our biggest security.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
There you go.
And you've seen and reviewed the resolution?
Yes.
Any other issues, John?
No, I don't think so.
Counselor?
No, Mr. Chair.
Board?
No.
Okay, do I have a motion approving the resolution approving site plan, special use permit for a drive-through stormwater pollution prevention plan and tree permit for SDML Realty, also known as Duncan Route two oh two?
Motion.
Second.
All's in favor.
Aye.
Thank you very much.
Good luck. Take care, guys. Alright, we'll move, do I have a motion to move into the work session portion of the meeting?
Motion.
Second.
All's in favor.
Aye.
Aaron's favorite part of the meeting. First on the agenda, we have the Ryder subdivision. This is a discussion of a minor subdivision, locations five three two, on the Hill Avenue. Joe Rena. How are you?
So it's the Ryder subdivision, it's been some time since we've been before the board. Since, since you've last seen this, we've done our testing and have approved septic areas with the health department. We've prepared our stormwater management plan, our SWIP for the project. The house location and driveway location have not changed. It's identical, the entrance to the driveway follows the existing driveway and then the park then splits off into a Y so that we can minimize the disturbance. The driveway does cross through existing wetland that's in the front of the property and then Steve will give you a rundown on that. And a considerable part of the
Did I?
And a part of the wetland that's also gonna be disturbed to accommodate our pocket wetland, which is gonna be for treating stormwater. The overall site is six acres and it's, and it's a one acre zone. So we wanted to come to you tonight, refresh this in your mind. Wanna, we're gonna do some tweaking we have to do between the site plan and mitigation plan and maybe possibly the next time talk about a public hearing, we've already had a PIH on this. So at this point, I'll let Steve give you a rundown on the, on the environment.
Thank you. Good evening, Steve Marino. The wetland on the site, there's, there's the mitigation plan, okay. Wetland on the site was originally, was initially flagged in twenty fourteen along with Bruce Barber at the time, then Bruce and I revisited the delineation in twenty seventeen and then we looked at it again in twenty twenty one. So the site's been flagged and/or reflagged three times since we first came before the board. As Joe mentioned, the driveway will be crossing through the wetland as the existing driveway does. That pink triangle you see there on the plan is the area of actual wetland disturbance to extend the driveway up to form the Y to access the second house. Everything you see there in yellow is, is the flagged wetland line. It's been maintained for a number of years since before twenty fourteen as lawn area. So our proposal is, in exchange for filling in that, that little triangular corner there, proposal is to restore the existing wetland to more of a wetland characteristic by overseeding the existing lawn, mowing a couple of times a year and getting wetland vegetation reestablished in that lawn and then expanding the wetland on either side of the new driveway in those areas that you see planted out with trees and shrubs and other plant materials. There's really not too much more to say about it, as you go further up the hill, it's dry, Joe has his septic, septic systems further up the hill, tested, approved through the health department. So really, it's a question of doing some, you know, allowing access through an existing driveway to get to a second lot and restoring the existing wetland on site.
Any one other thing that changed is the, the original residence was, was demolished. I think the last time we were here was still up. And I think they were mandated by the building department to take it down.
Any comments, concerns from the board?
No.
Have you seen the memo from the conservation board?
Yes, we were before them this past week.
Just summarize that for the record.
Sure. So we've got a letter dated May seventeenth twenty four from the conservation board. Talking about the meeting, since our last review of the septic fields have been approved and a pocket wetland is proposed to mitigate the intrusion into the buffer and wetland. The proposed pocket wetland adequately mitigates the sheet flow from the drainage area and intrusion into the buffer. When the plan is fully realized, the applicant should return with a landscape plan, tree survey and mitigation plan for tree removal. Respectfully, conservation board.
And I'm glad that you mentioned the tree removal. We would like to request that the tree, trees be located and a tree removal plan be done at the time of building permit for each individual lot versus doing that at this point in time. It would be less of a layout of expense for the property owner than, you know, having to do that now, especially with the leaves on the trees. So
I'm sorry, especially with what?
With the leaves on the trees now and I think we're not, you know, we're not talking about a substantial amount of trees that come down, so if we could do it at the time of building permit, that would really be a help to the property owner.
So you're gonna do a survey at that, at that time?
Right, so when they're ready to construct each lot, they would then do a survey of each lot and do a tree survey at that time. And come back for a tree permit.
Why not now?
It's, it's more the expense of doing the, the tree survey now and, and you know, the timing isn't great timing, but it's more the expense to, to get that done at this point.
Joe, you anticipating the, the footprint of the, of the individual houses to either be modified or, or adjust the locations?
No, we're, we're gonna stick to the location.
Okay.
Maybe the, the footprint may change as far as outline, but we're showing a pretty, pretty good sized house there.
So that's not gonna impact the, the tree count or? That's, that's really where my question was going, in other words, if, if we were to agree to, to what you're asking for, is the design of the house going to impact the results of the requirement?
No, I, I mean, as I said, the location is, is as shown, we expect to keep every, keep the footprints where they are. Maybe the outline of the house is gonna change, but our disturbance, our, our proposed grading, where the septics are gonna go, that's not changing.
What, what, what do we customarily do in a minor subdivision to address this type of an issue? Don't we do it at the outset of the subdivision plan or do we defer it? What do we usually?
Usually you're approving the tree permit at the, at the time.
I'm not comfortable in the side and splitting it up unless there's a really good reason, planning reason why we should do that.
I, I don't see the harm in it, to be honest with you. I, I, you know, they have to come in for a building permit, they probably have to come in for, back to you for a site plan, so you know, why can't it be done at that time? It's not, it's not, it's not going to, in my mind, impact the approval. We're gonna be cutting trees down unless, unless that's gonna decide whether or not you're gonna approve it or not, the number of trees we're cutting down, but otherwise we could plan for it at that time.
Well then, procedurally, what happens at that point? Supposing what you want to have happen?
That would be a condition, that would be a condition of, of a building permit.
And never, does not come back here, then?
No, it has to come back here.
Yeah, has to come back here.
As, okay.
So we would approve this subject here coming back?
For, for final site plan and tree permit for each lot.
Prior to the issuance of a building permit.
Correct.
Do you have the, sorry, John.
In other words, the site, so you'll need to get the plat signed and filed, is that where you're going?
Yeah.
Okay. The improvement plans, however, would not be. Is that a way to do it?
Well, no, the, the improvement plans would, but couldn't that be a condition of the, in the resolution? Just like, just like you have a condition that if we change the, the elevation of the house more than two feet, it has to come back to the planning board. If we agree to that ahead of time, then that's a given step.
Joe, where are you with the, with the septic, sorry?
As long as it comes back.
We're done with the health department.
So this is the location?
That's the location.
And expansion areas or replacement areas?
That, that's all in, in that, that box shown on
So that proposed septic areas, that's it?
Right.
No further, are you bringing in material for that, anything that would expand that area?
No, and the, we don't have to if there are any trees in the expansion area, we do not have to clear them at this time, right? It's just, would just be the primary area.
I think the one thing about this board is we really don't like surprises.
Yeah, oh, of course, I, I don't, I don't need it.
We've gotten a few of them lately.
Yeah, I don't need it.
And we're a little
We're being more cautious.
Yes.
It's okay, I get it.
As long as, as long as, speaking for myself, as long as the resolution says that, that the owner of the land is coming back to us for the approval prior to the issuance or the application for a building permit, then I'm more comfortable.
Yeah.
But I don't wanna leave it that somebody's gonna say, well, I bought the property, I bought a lot and I didn't know about it.
Right. I mean, I mean
It's gotta be application.
You know, and I, and I hate to use the expense aspect of this as a reason, but there's the expense of having the tree survey, the trees tagged, then the surveyor go out there and locate the trees. Right, and then there's the mitigation and that's all, that all has to be laid out upfront at this point in time. And if it could be done at the, at the building, time of the, the building stage, when it could be done when they're ready and, you know, if they're not gonna build both houses at the same time, that eases that expense.
So in this process, when does the tree permit get issued? Because that work has to be done.
Yeah, that'd be before the building.
Well, that's what I'm saying.
No, you couldn't issue it until you had a plan of what was being removed, what the mitigation was, that's acceptable to the board.
Right.
And then you can have that, that permit signed and, and issued, but I don't know if you wanna, you're suggesting doing two separate permits as well, are you or?
Well, as each lot comes, yeah, as each lot is ready to be built and
Would you be able to, I mean, if they go forward with it, be able to do the plan for the mitigation for both lots at the same time?
I mean, I think that's a, that's a reasonable compromise, yeah.
Legally, do we have a problem doing it? As long as we have language in there saying you gotta come back here before you apply for a building permit, then they can't move forward without it.
Yeah. I mean, it's a two, it's a two lot subdivision, it's not a
So what happens if these lots are sold off to separate people?
That's a good, that's a good point, yeah, if, if, then the mitigation, doing it all at one time is, becomes a complication.
Why don't we put verbiage in there that prior to any sale, can we?
I don't know.
Then, if that's the case, then I wouldn't even if it had, taking Aaron's point, if they sold the lot separately or they sold one lot so they could build the other lot or something like that, then that creates a complication, I don't know, then maybe
And that could happen if you get the subdivision approved.
That's, that's right.
Okay.
But is that a complication for us or for the applicant?
No, it's a complication for, it would be a complication for the
Owners.
The owners.
Yeah.
Then it would be on them then at that point. And, well, maybe, you know, if, if, if that's the case, maybe they're, they'd be willing to accept that responsibility that
Well, but I could see one owner coming in and saying, I'm, I'm applying for a building permit, I'm doing tree removal on my piece, but nothing's happened on the other one. Now we split up the whole application.
That's a good point, yeah.
I'm not comfortable doing that.
I think we could put language in there that says if the property were being conveyed in part or in whole, that they would have to come back to us at that time.
Is that, is that a, is that a reasonable condition to put, we can put that in?
And that can go on the subdivision plat.
Right.
So it's not
Go to run with the land.
That, that's correct, so that can go on the subdivision plat, so it's
Alright.
It's, it's there for any title company or attorneys representing the
We got time to work out the
Yeah, with those conditions, I think I would be okay.
I'd go for that.
Yeah. Oh, suspenders.
Yeah.
Okay, so we'll move forward.
Convince us, Joe.
Get out a time for hearings.
What's that?
We're gonna figure out a time for a hearing.
Yeah, so give us a, some time to
Do we do an informational on this?
To tweak the plan and we'll come back and talk about a hearing.
Okay.
Alright, thanks.
Thanks, guys. Take care.
My memory doesn't go back that far. Anything closer in, I'm in trouble.
Alright, next on the agenda, we have two T-Town applicant, or items, we have the campus renovation, discussion of site plan, location sixteen hundred Spring Valley Road. And we also have the town board referral for a lake dredging. How are you?
Mr. Chairman, before we proceed, I am going to, on the record, state that I must recuse myself from these two applications because my wife is on the board of trustees of the applicant, so I'm going to file my letters and step out.
Hello, I'm Alan Sorkin, I'm the managing director of T-Town.
How are you?
While Andy's getting set up, I thought I'd give a brief rationale and introduction to the project. Since nineteen sixty-three, T-Town has been serving the local community with its environmental efforts, with the largest community funded nature preserve in Westchester County with over a thousand acres under management. Our mission is to inspire lifelong environmental stewardship in the community. For decades, we've been sharing our love of the environment by preserving land, teaching people of all ages from preschool to adulthood, running an environmental summer camp and reaching out to Westchester's underserved communities. Faced with our aging infrastructure and buildings, we embarked on a historic capital campaign to improve the facilities. We've labeled it the T-Town Campaign for Future Generations and we're seeking to raise the funding to preserve, to preserve our natural resources and strengthen our community impact. So we have four primary objectives. One is to maintain the health of the preserve, strengthen our longstanding commitment to environmental education with a focus on indoor/outdoor learning experiences, invest in the aging infrastructure and buildings, including improving our carbon footprint and sustainability, create a more safe and accessible campus environment. We're looking to enhance our mission impact, not expand our capacity, and I think that's an important point. Looking ahead, we must ensure that T-Town's impact is sustainable and continues to preserve our mission. So lastly, we engaged who we think are the best in the field or among the best in the field when it comes to environmentally sound and sustainable construction. That's An Architects is the architectural firm that's working with us and they're best known for the Jones Beach Energy Center that they were the architects for, Star White House are our landscape architects, and Andy here, Andy Tong from DTS Providence, who are the engineers. And so we think we have a good environmental story to tell and Andy will take you through the details.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Andrew Tong from DTS Providence in White Plains. Here as a representative of the design and planning team. We've, we've been working for some time with Alan and his group to identify how best to update the facility for the next generation. Alan mentioned the capital campaign, it actually started before the pandemic and was put on hold somewhat because they had other things to do during that period of time. But the, we're here for a pre-preliminary discussion with you. We have activities all around the nature center and carriage house on Spring Valley Road, both on the north side adjoining those buildings and the south side, where there's currently an adjunct parking lot, this board approved, I think about ten years ago now. The parcels in question, there are, I think about four hundred acres of T-Town is in Yorktown of the thousand acres in total. These five parcels on which the proposal is situated are approximately a hundred and thirty-two acres, again, on both sides, north side and the south side of Spring Valley Road. The two original buildings were on these smaller parcels and then the larger parcels on either side were added later on. A lot of this activity revolves around reorganizing both the buildings and the site to better serve the, the various missions and programs that T-Town has developed over the years. If you've been to the visitor center, you may see that along with the exhibit halls, the office space, the animal facilities, the education program is kind of stuck in between all those activities and shares space. And they do it quite nimbly, but as they've matured, they recognize that both for the, during the season, all season visitations that come from, I think, five different school districts in the area, as well as the summer camp that serves a great number of kids, they would like to better separate those functions from the other functions that happen at T-Town, the regular visitor functions. So one of the main aspects of this program is taking what is behind, to the north of the So one of the main, uh, aspects of this program is taking what is behind, to the north of the two main buildings. There is a red barn, if you've been there, uh, that's used for maintenance facility, uh, for maintenance purposes, and there's a small parking lot around that. And it's kind of in the center of the campus, and the architects determined that it would be best to move that out of the center so that space could be used, better used for other purposes, namely the creation of a separate education building. Uh, so there will be this, this, uh, almost, they won't like me saying, but kind of football-shaped building, fifty-seven hundred square feet, one-story education building with classrooms and gathering space, and a green roof, as well as geothermal heating and, um, cooling, to serve as the center of really the educational component that is both indoors and outdoors at T-Town. The maintenance function will move across the street to the south side, uh, adjoining the craft, the Croft Building, the Science Building, uh, where there was a former tennis court, uh, and it will be, um, a low, uh, one-story shed at one, one end of that former tennis court, and there'll be a small parking area adjoining, uh, the Croft Science Building, so that the maintenance, which still needs access into the center of the site, will be pulled offline, uh, back of house, if you will. That frees up this space for the new education building, uh, adjoining walkways and paths, a new nature play area. And also importantly, it was determined that, um, a lot of the activity around Spring Valley Road, uh, and the two parking lots, the main parking lot just to the west of the, um, Nature Center, has to do with, uh, buses that bring children to the, uh, facility. Both school buses, uh, and other types of buses during the school year, and also people bringing, uh, kids to the summer camp. It's proposed to remove this parking lot that adjoins the Nature Center to the west, replace it with planted area and still have maintenance access, and to create a second, uh, access point to the center of the campus, off the existing Blinn Road Lot, which is to the north. To bring a new, uh, loop drive in there that would provide a places, a place for buses to drop off students proximate to the new education building. And so that pickup and drop-off, uh, activity of both buses and cars with parents bringing their kids to camp would be separated from the main activity here at the center along Spring Valley Road. We think that would reduce the amount of potential conflicts, uh, for those kids crossing the street or just being in the area, uh, and the cars going back and forth to drop off for educational programs. To replace the parking, uh, to the west of the, uh, Nature Center, we propose to extend the south lot, uh, further to the south, uh, so there'd be parking here, Blinn Road, uh, Lot would be, um, redesigned and reconfigured slightly to improve its, its functioning. Uh, we would also look to be putting a stormwater management at all the parking lots, uh, where there really is none today. Uh, and so part of this upgrade is not only to, to reorganize the functions, but also upgrade the sustainability and the, the, uh, example that, uh, the T-Town facilities would provide for all the visitors and the students that come. I think that's the, um, the primary components of the plan. We would look forward to, uh, submitting, uh, architectural drawings, landscape architectural drawings, engineering drawings to your board, uh, that show all these different improvements in greater detail. But would like to get any reaction you might have initially to the proposal this evening.
Well, I think the first thing we have to worry about is T-Town's, uh, real concerns about the environment. I don't know if we could trust them. I, just off the, off the cuff, this looks like a, you know, very, very nice plan. I haven't been out there in a while, but, I, I mean, obviously, they do a, a great job with their programs out there in keeping the property immaculate. What are our next steps with, this would be, uh, a full.
There's a site plan.
Yeah. I think it probably would be a good idea for, to conduct the site visit, you know, just to get, you know, boots on the ground and really see what's going on out there.
You're welcome to bring your kids as well.
They're much older now, but when they were younger, we did.
Or your grandkids.
None yet, but, um, I think maybe next we set up a site visit. Maybe, maybe some of those details you, you'll have out, and we could look at them when we're out. But honestly, you know, the name T-Town speaks for itself.
Well, we, we look forward to, uh, coming back before you with greater detail and, and showing you around the place.
Yep, absolutely.
How long do you anticipate the entire project from first shovel in the ground to, is it in phases?
About eighteen months, Alan says.
Everything, everything done?
Yeah. Uh, the, the facility will continue to be in operation while this is happening, so that's, there's a little bit of balancing, uh, back and forth there and, and, uh, but, um, you know, we've been planning this for some years now, and we'd like to get it in place so that it starts working for everybody.
And the dredging part of this, is that going to be done at the same time?
It's, uh, going to be coordinated, Tim will speak to that. The dredge process in part will use the Blinn Lot for drying out of the dredge spoils, and we're looking forward to using them in their dried-out form for some of the soils, uh, around the site here. So we'll be coordinating closely with that work so that we don't step on each other's toes and.
Excellent.
Minimize disruption.
Any concerns, John?
Nope.
Counselor?
Forward to the next step.
Nope. All right, so let's set up a site visit and, uh, move forward.
Move forward.
Good.
Very nice to see you.
Nice to see you.
Thank you.
How are you?
I'm, I'm well, thank you.
Excellent.
I'm Tim Judge with the assessment, I'm here regarding the dredge.
Okay.
We submitted revised plans as requested, uh, by the New York City DEP and New York State DEC. We, uh, clarified some issues, um, and questions that had come up regarding, um, methods and also including, uh, profiles of the bathymetric survey, those were included. Uh, there were also, um, the, the information had been provided, but, um, was, was a bit buried into the narrative that we had submitted previously, but about questions about the diameter breast height of the trees that have to be removed. Uh, that has been provided for the Tree Commission, um, and I think we're pretty good in terms of answering all the questions, and I'm happy to entertain any other questions that the boards may have regarding the, the dredge.
John, have we heard anything from Dan or on this, or?
One of the things that was asked was about the Army Corps of Engineers and a permit from Army Corps. Army Corps is passing on issuing a permit because we're not putting anything back into T-Town Lake except water. So there is no infill of, uh, any wetlands or of the lake itself, therefore, they don't have to issue a permit. So that correspondence was included.
So, because it's pure removal?
It's just water going back in, so the, the way a hydro dredge works, it looks kind of like a snow thrower. It's two augers into the center, a pump, and it comes through a pipe to the geo-tubes, and the geo-tubes are a geosynthetic fabric that holds the solids and allows water out. It does not allow water to come back in, so it's a one-way, um, you know, kind of like you wish for your kids after they move out, you, they don't come back. But it's, uh, it's a very effective way to dry the solids and to get them to, uh, a usable state. Uh, we have done testing under an approved protocol from DEC and the New York State Department of Health, and that's all come back. It's listed as general fill, so we're, they can be used. The de-watering is at Blinn Road and also up at, uh, the Hidden Valley Meadow, which is part of a meadow restoration plan. And one of the things New York City DEP wanted was to have a better understanding of what plants would be used in the restoration of the meadow, and that, uh, plan is included.
What's the plan for the solids?
So the solids on the Blinn Road Lot, as Mr. Tong mentioned, those will be used on-site. Um, the solids at the Hidden Valley Meadow Site, we're going to solarize those after they've de-watered, and that means that you actually put a clear plastic over them and you heat them. And what that does is it, it, it helps remove, well, let me rephrase this. When we set the pads up for the geo-tubes, we'll solarize the soil that's there to kill off any invasive plants that are in the soil. The geo-tubes are then put into those spots, they de-water, and the return water goes back to T-Town Lake. Then those soils that are removed from the geo-tubes and used to regrade the meadow, and that's when you have the replanting to get rid of invasive species and replant it with native species for the meadow.
So all of the resulting soils from the dredging will be used on-site?
That is correct, that is the plan as it stands now, that is correct.
How many yards do you anticipate?
Um, I think we, we had tested for twenty thousand, we're certainly not going to dredge that much. We're probably in, uh, maybe fifteen to twelve thousand coming out, and then that'll shrink down in terms of final use.
And how do you determine when you hit where you want to hit?
So, working with the dredger, we're only going to be taking about three feet, uh, because we're not dredging for navigation purposes. This is to really return the hydrology around the island, around Wildflower Island, and to help prevent, uh, invasive species from getting out onto the island. Uh, the wetland that is, uh, just below the, the main center of T-Town, that was, uh, restored a few years ago, but it's incredibly shallow in there, and the concern is that you can get invasive plants moving across and onto the island. There are a couple of different species of plants which are considered threatened and, and critical, and only occur in a couple of areas. Specifically, there are two species of orchid, and those orchids are ground-based, they're not up in the, in the canopy like you see in the tropics, and if you have an invasive plant move and it outcompetes it by shedding them out, and that's one of the reasons we want to try to get the dredge to maintain that hydrology around the, around the lake. It will, the island will maintain its typical shore, and we're actually not going to dredge any closer than about twelve feet from the existing shore line to actually create a channel.
Geo-tubes are about five by fifteen, is that roughly the size, by, by the, whatever the length is?
You can, um, you can get them custom-made, but generally, they're about thirty feet across, and anywhere from, I forget exactly our dimensions, but, you know, a hundred feet to a couple of hundred feet, so.
And, and they will then be removed once the work is completed?
That is correct.
Okay.
So you, yeah, there's a manifold system so that you distribute the water into them evenly, so that there's even distribution of the solids. And part of the preparation for this on the Blinn Road side will be to have a, uh, you actually construct a pad so that there is a little pitch, but absolutely zero over zero going across the tubes, because you don't want them to move. We don't want to start a Hollywood horse show of the giant tube of sediments, uh, running through the, through the woods. So they're, they're actually laid perfectly, that's the construction of them. And then, once they're de-watered, you're down to about seventy percent solids, which is about what you have when you're, uh, or, excuse me, thirty percent solids, you're about seventy percent water, it's earth that you can pick up and squeeze into a ball, basically, but it's loose, it's not mud. It's drier than that. Um, then that material can be taken out and used.
How, how is that removed from the, from the tube?
Usually with a machine, uh, you know, uh, an excavator or.
So you could drive that into the tubes?
Uh, you kind of cut the tubes open, and then you scoop the material out.
Okay.
Then the tubes themselves leave the site as solid waste.
Is there anything you need to do to, will, will you be disrupting any reptile or amphibian wildlife?
Good question. Um, one of the things that we've, we've looked at, and this is, this is where, as a biologist, I, I get to explore, um, the Army Corps of Engineers and DEC use something called a soft start when they install pilings, which is to vibrate or hammer the pilings for just a short period of time, and then give it a little rest, and then do it again to, to essentially scare off any, any wildlife. We're going to make sure that we're following the same thing by starting the, starting the auger and then turning it back off. So there isn't a protocol for this for freshwater dredging, so we're actually developing the protocol and have proposed that to DEC and DEP.
John, any issues, concerns?
Uh, I don't think so, it's, uh.
So this is a town board referral, so.
A town board referral.
Even though we all seem very interested in it, are there, are there no issues?
I, I don't think, I think it's.
No, it, it seems to be well-designed and thought out, so, I mean, if you have any planning concerns, uh, convey them to the board, but I don't see any.
From my information, what would be the cost of this? Gee, I mean, it sounds.
I don't want to say that in front of Alan. This is not an inexpensive thing.
That was the end of it.
Yeah, no, it's, um, it's in the hundreds of thousands of dollars.
I bet.
I, I wish I got that much, I'm, I'm just a small piece of it.
Anything for Warren, I think we send a positive memo to the.
You might consider going into comedy.
I do this when I try to keep my students awake, you know, at an eight o'clock in the morning class when I'm teaching. If at least three of them are asleep, I know I'm doing my job.
Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you.
Good luck to you. Take care, have a good night. All right, again, we moved, uh, number eight, Jacob Rhodes Solar to the end. Next up is number nine, and then Tuckett Sounds LLC. Anybody here?
They conveyed, uh, to me, uh, just a little while ago that, uh, they, they didn't feel like they were ready, their, their site hasn't been energized yet, and, um, they, um, uh, they conveyed to John as well, that you guys wanted to hear, uh, the, uh, how the fans were, uh, with the AC once they were, uh, turned on, and since they haven't been able to get, and I said you were kind of to, uh, power the building yet, they felt that they weren't ready, and they wanted me to convey that to you, but I, I thought they were going to be here. And I think John has more information on it.
Well, there was a, we spoke to the architect on Friday. And he wrote, I asked him to write a little note to you guys, which is in your packages. It's a May seventeenth email, which basically states what Sergio just, um, related to you. I suggested that they, you know, that you would probably have some discussion on it in either case, and thought maybe a good idea for them to be here, even if they were not ready and were requesting of you to, uh, come out again once they have those units energized to listen to them, so. And that's really where it, it stands.
But, John, they don't seem to understand or appreciate the process. They should be bringing a revised site plan to this board, they have not done that.
Right.
You know, the fact that we're saying we're waiting for those to be energized almost. almost makes it sound like we're complicit, and we're not. You know, I mean, it doesn't require a lecture. This is a self-inflicted wound. And, you know, the fact that they should be here with a revised site plan with what they want, whether or not it's there, with what they want.
Right, well, I recommend...
Right now, we have an approved site plan that they have chosen not to comply with.
Right. We recommended that they ought to be here to have this discussion, regardless whether they were ready with the revised plan or not, which they said that they would not be ready. So, I had expected that they would be here for the discussion.
And I just wanna point out that the applicant knew enough at one point during the project to come back with the siding change, right? They went from a collaborative siding to a vinyl siding, where this was taking all the units off the roof into an area that was supposed to be green space for the project. I wholeheartedly...
Isn't there a stop-work order on this project?
I believe there is.
If there's a stop-work order on this project, how are they gonna get energized? Or can they do that?
They requested to energize the, the only thing that they requested to continue with was energizing the building. Everything, all other work is ceased.
So, is there an exception in the stop-work order for that?
I believe they worked that out through the Building Department, which was the agency that issued the stop-work order in this case.
To me, that's, again, it's, pardon my French, but it's assed backwards. You know, they need to put a plan in front of us that proposes the relocation of the units. We haven't seen that. And so, you know, the fact that they're not here to discuss it is pretty concerning.
Yeah, I agree.
Yes.
I think we should, we should discuss what we have to discuss while we're here. It's on our agenda. We spent the time for a field visit.
Yep.
The issues are fresh in our minds, I think, so we should, I think, have at least have a discussion about it, if not, come to a conclusion at the next meeting that they show up at.
There's nothing before us then, is there?
No, I mean, the questions...
We have an approved site plan.
We haven't, yeah, we have an approved site...
There's no new request before us for us to take action?
Right. I'm just saying that based on what we saw and the approveds, we have a resolution and a site plan.
Yeah.
And we have a field visit that showed us that there are units. In my thinking, those units are in the setback area. And there's a legal question of whether those air-conditioning units are legal in a setback area of the property. I've heard planning board, zoning board meetings where they have applications for the placement of an air-conditioning unit in a setback that requires a variance. There's no variance, to my knowledge, but there are units sitting out there. So, I don't know how a building permit was issued to put those in a setback area. They're clearly, the setback line, if you look at the site plan that I have, that we have in our packet, those units are there. And we also have a letter from Mr. Kopstein saying that it looks like an additional unit was placed there since our field visit.
Yep.
The one thing that we didn't discuss while we were out there is the heat that's generated from those units. Those units, their purpose in life is to dissipate heat from the operation of that system. We were talking about the visibility of those units and the noise generated by those units. But what about the heat that's gonna be generated? When you're sitting at a table, three or four feet from nine or ten units, it's not gonna be a happy place to be sitting. So, I think there's an issue there that we didn't focus on, 'cause the morning we were out there was pretty chilly. So, we weren't thinking about it. But that's what, that's the reality of sitting. I mean, go put a chair next to your condensing unit outside your house and see what happens.
That's, I agree.
So, I think there's several issues there. On top of which, I went to the Planning Office since we were at our field visit, and I looked at the plans, which are now part of our package. And the plans, which are, I think, a very thorough set of plans done by the architect, it clearly shows that there's a nine-hundred-square-foot depressed roof area. Its purpose in life was to house mechanical equipment. And there is, there is a, there is an access shaft that goes up to that roof in two locations.
So, you're not busting up the walls then?
So, those shafts, I don't know what other purpose they have in life other than to convey the duct work.
Did he build the shafts?
Well, I don't know if he built them, but they're on the plans. So, if he didn't build them, then it's another issue.
That's another issue.
But he kept saying that, oh, to run those pre-charge lines would be, you know, the building's already finished inside. Well, he made the decision to do this nine months ago, according to his own comment that I asked. I said at the last meeting, when did you change to these units that are outside? About nine months ago. Well, if he did that, the fact that the building is finished on the inside is your doing, not our. You know, they've created a greater disturbance.
They can always build a chase coming down.
Well, they could go through the existing shafts.
Of course.
'Cause those pre-charge lines are not large. They're probably two inches in diameter, if at all. Or they could create a chase within the building. But what are the, what are the existing chases there for now? If it's, if it's a split system, and if they built it?
Yeah, we don't know if you built it.
So, my feeling is, take the units off the ground and put them up where they belong. And those units are not that large. They're designed to go through a doorway. And he told us that those, that scuttle that goes up to with a ship's ladder, I think it's on the plan, it's something like two foot by three foot or something like that. They could hoist these right through the shaft that goes up to the roof. They don't need to get a crane if they didn't want to. They could put a chainfall up there with, you know, dunage and just hoist them up there, not that heavy.
And I just know, and I bet, my last thought, if you go back to the hearings and when we hit, the discussions we had in the work section, 'cause I know Mr. Taggert over there always, I don't mean to say harp, but harps on us, because we've been burnt before with things we've approved that you can see. And we're very sensitive, I think, to those prior approvals where it went awry, that these things, and that's why that area is up there just for that.
This building was designed around the shielding of those units.
I agree.
So, I think this board in the past, going way back, in my memory, if there was a real problem that you run into, you run into rock that nobody knew about, people come back to the board and you say, we worked something out 'cause it was an unforeseen issue or event. That's not the case here. There was a, there was a full set of drawings that clearly shows what the intent was. There was a review, the people of Yorktown watch us at home or come here and watch us in person, and the review process yields a set of drawings and a site plan and approving resolution that they would expect whoever is building that to build to those details. And if we were to give them relief from that, then I don't think all the work that we do is worth anything, 'cause it's...
It was set of pressure.
You just, you just walk in and change whatever you decided to build, and now you use the excuse, well, I already built it, and it's expensive, and it's difficult for me to change it, and I won't get a crane. Well, that's your choice.
I agree. I have, I have a suggestion.
He just walked in. I think he's, he's just walked in and out.
I have a...
For somebody that's always here, just so you know.
I have a suggestion. I understand that the Building Department issued a stop-work order. Is it not true that we can issue one independently of any other agency?
Absolutely.
I think we should.
Okay.
To make sure that we have control over this issue. I don't know how to do that, 'cause I don't think we've done one before, but I think we should. What do you...
I think the board agrees with you a hundred percent, and I think you're...
I have a copy of the law. I don't have it with me, but I think John can take that action upon our directive to him to do so.
Is that how it works?
I believe it is. I could be wrong, but...
Maybe Counselor can enlighten us on, what's the procedure for us to get a stop-work order out of this board?
To issue one by this board?
Yeah.
It's my understa, I don't wanna talk for you, but it's my understanding that our board can, it's my understanding that our board can make that recommendation, and the Director of Planning can actually take the action.
I believe that's correct.
Okay, so...
Let me double-check, but yes, I think that's right.
So, I mean, I don't know if we have to go into executive session to take that vote, but we...
Vote right here.
Why? Executive?
I'm sorry, not executive session, into... Yeah, 'cause we're in work session right now.
Yeah, see?
No.
No, but what I'm saying is, we could, we could, we could express our intention to do that to John, and John can take the action on our behalf. I believe that's how the law is written.
Okay, I got one question. Would our stop-work order supersede the Building Department? Because the Building Department might relieve their...
They can't relieve our stuff.
I know they can't relieve ours, but does ours supersede his? He never looked at the plans anyhow.
I'm not sure how the building permit was issued. My understanding was that it was a permit for the mechanical equipment, not the placement of the equipment, okay? But I may be wrong on that. Maybe we should see the Building Department file that time.
Yeah, because, I mean, in fairness to the Building Inspector, you could locate mechanical equipment in a lot of places that are legal in terms of New York State Code, building code. Rich would know this better than anybody. You, there are a lot of places you could place it. That doesn't mean any place is okay. It just means some places are okay. So, he might have issued that permit, I haven't seen the wording on it, giving them the ability to locate that equipment. But if it's not subject to anything, then it's subject to everything.
I don't love, I'll tell you, I don't love the idea of dueling stop-work orders, you know, issued by two different entities of the town. I think there's probably a way to synthesize the two that would...
I'd look into, I'd also check the status. I'd also check the status of the stop-work order from the Building Department, you know, just to make sure it's still in effect.
I would like us to go on the record stating something about how we feel about this particular process that took place without, you know, where the applicant's been off on the roof.
I think you've got a unanimous feeling of the board.
And I think we should have, we should have something out there that says a stop-work order needs to be in place. I don't really care by whom, but...
Yeah, how do we confirm the status of the current stop-work order?
We would just contact the Building Department.
Because if that has, if it's no longer a valid stop-work order, then I would suggest we put our own forth. I agree with Counsel that there's, having two could be complicated. But if there is not currently one, there should be one.
Well, I think our stop-work order, there's other issues that came up. That's not just the air-conditioning units. There is a location of a propane tank. There is a relocation of the dumpster enclosure that he now wants to change. So, there's a couple of issues.
Yeah, but again, but again, that's all, it's called a good discussion, but prepare a proposed site plan with those changes.
Exactly, right, yeah. So, I don't, I don't...
Words are great, but put them on paper.
I don't think our stop-work order is intended to be offensive to the Building Inspector. It's to be comprehensive in terms of that site, because the Building Inspector's looking at the air-conditioning units. I'm looking at the placement of...
And everything else.
Everything else.
Yeah.
So, he could relieve that, his own stop-work order, because the guy says, I'm putting it on the roof. But we've got other issues that still have to be talked about.
Agreed.
So, it's not meant to be offensive. It's just...
Did you wanna add something?
No, it's just redirecting the microphone. Just doesn't matter, of course.
Just an anticipation, yeah.
Counselor? Mr. Chairman, what do we do?
Any guidance here?
I think we need to verify with the Building Inspector just what exactly he's permitted there.
So, should we go into a special session?
So, he just responded, John Landy, and the stop-work order has been lifted.
It's been lifted?
Just so you know.
Specifically for the energizing of those units? Is that the intent, or...
I don't, I wouldn't be able to comment on that, but I don't, you know, just so you know...
There's no stop-work order.
I think, I think that the intention, from what I understood, was to have him continue with the rest of the project until this got ironed out.
Well, in that case, we should proceed.
Yeah, but I just want you guys to be informed. Now, I did see the applicant here. He walked in, I think, and he just briefly walked out. So, the applicant is here.
Not here.
But I didn't see his architect with him, so he might be waiting for his architect.
Well, I think we move forward either way. So, do I have a motion to move into a special session?
Motion.
Second.
All's in favor?
Aye.
Do I have a motion for the Planning Board through John Taggert to issue a stop-work order on all site work and interior modifications to Nantucket Sounds Sons LLC, three eighty-five Kear Street?
Motion.
Second.
All's in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Next on the agenda is number ten, Foothill Street subdivision.
You have to go back to work.
Oh, yeah, I'm sorry. I was supposed to help me with that.
I can't help you, John. You need to forget about it.
Do I have a motion to move back into the special, the work session portion of the meeting? I'm so confused. Is there a second?
Second.
All's in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Just so you know for the record, Mr. Bach next to me feels that the work session portion of the meeting is real, it's all...
It's all a regular session. There's no distinction in town law between a work session and a regular session is just for the convenience of the board, but there's no limit on business we can take once we convene.
So, I like to give him the business on it every time I get to chat.
I second that. All in favor?
I stand.
All right, next we have the Foothill Street subdivision. This is a discussion of a major subdivision. Location's three eight five zero Foothill Street.
Evening. My name is Peter Scott. I'm an architect and engineer, representing the applicant, and the owners are sitting next to me here. Foothill Street has a large parcel, sixteen point nine acres on it. And basically, it consists of an old abandoned dam and ponded site on the south side or right side of the piece of paper in front of you. And the property rises to a little hill along Foothill Street and drops downward and contours to the north or the left-hand side of that drawing in front of you. What we did is, we are looking at developing this property, not really as a subdivision, but we're interested in looking at the ordinance where you can substitute alternate plans in lieu of a subdivision, once you get an appropriate lot count. And there were some pending ordinances in your regs in regards to doing that. So, we're looking more like a clustering project of some form with the property. We did, we do have a fully complying site plan. We did all the grading, the drainage, the, even the septic areas are noticed there. But we also might have an opportunity to get sewer to the site, which is located in the vicinity. So, when we looked at the project, what you see before you now is a plan where we're showing a conventional development of the property to develop a unit count or a lot count. And then, from that, we'd like to sort of pursue other options. And that consists of basically connected units of some form. They could be arrayed upon the project, and it would effectively tighten up development of the property. So, we have a DEC wetland on the right, and we're waiting for DEC to verify a wetland line. We have done all the other inspections and testing on the property. But the, we had Mike Nowicki from Environmental Services locate all the flags, but we're still waiting for DEC to show up to verify their location. But in the meantime, we're hoping that we could possibly talk about how to move forward with an alternate type of development. And from what I learned in speaking with some people in planning and also looking at your regulations, there is sort of an opportunity to pursue alternate development options for this type of property, and that's what we'd like to pursue in some manner. I did put together just a really quick sketch of what we could do on the property. And we, with seven lots, we can get a septic bedroom count approval of like up to thirty units or thirty bedrooms with our, with our standard subdivision of the property. And we're looking at doing something different than the standard subdivision, but putting together a cluster arrangement of some form that you see before you. This is not cast and stone, but it's just something that we are thinking about in terms of how to utilize a site in a better process. Again, the front of the property's flat, and the rear is steep. And so, it makes, it's common sense for us to pull everything forward as you see before you. And if we can get water and sewer to the property, we could basically, again, eliminate septic systems, et cetera, for the parcel and maybe pursue something along these lines. But your conversion from a standard subdivision to some sort of attached units is somewhat vague in the ordinance, to be candid. And we would have to work with the planning to sort of see how we move forward in such a vehicle as you see before you. Again, it's just a concept.
So, if I can kind of...
So if I can kind of recite back to you what I think you said, the plan in front of us shows a subdivision feasibility plan. That was to establish the number of units, correct?
Yes.
Okay. Absent, what I see absent on that plan is any delineation of a recreation area?
If you want to go back to the other one, if you could, for me. We basically have a huge area to the right side of like, I think it's like 10 acres. Some of it wet, some of it is dry. And that was one concept in terms of making a conventional subdivision to create some sort of recreation area, which had a frontage on Foothill Street.
Yeah, I mean, I hear what you're saying. I'm saying usually it's delineated on a concept plan so that when you migrate from the original subdivision plan that delineates the number of lots.
Yes.
That then transfers to the clustered plan. So you can, you don't basically eliminate the recreation area and then lay out.
Yes, yes.
In other words, it's placed because that's your intention. And you work with the non-encumbered, you know, area for non-recreation.
Yeah, we're not, again, the map is, that whole, everything to the right-hand side is that open space we proposed with our standard lot subdivision.
All right.
Which has a pond, a dam, a lot of improvements in place at this point in time.
I mean, I hear what you're saying about going to a different form of housing, if you will, or design.
Yes.
I've never seen what I'd call a traditional subdivision then transfer to attached housing. I've never seen it before. Not in this town. I'm not telling you that you can't get there, but I've just not seen it. So nothing comes to mind that fits the bill of what you're talking about. Not to say that you couldn't possibly convince me, but I just don't know of anything that, that animal doesn't exist in Yorktown that I know of.
Right. Yeah, we're, we've done, we've done another projects in other municipalities.
Okay.
Especially with a site like this, where we could create extensive amounts of open space around the development.
Well, that's the idea of clustering.
That's correct.
Right, but I'm just saying in terms of the housing form, I haven't seen it, but I'm willing to.
Sure.
Open my ears and.
Is it, I just want to understand, is this lot subdivided into those seven lots? Or it's not, right?
No, it's just, it's raw land.
It's just a, kind of a plan.
A concept.
So right now, it's one.
Yeah, one big one.
So there is nothing standing in the way of proposing a different type of housing on that property.
Other than zoning, I guess.
Yeah, yeah, absolutely.
That's a seven lot application.
Yeah, it'd be, it's a concept, we're just trying to.
No, I hear you, I just.
Because with sewer and water and a large parcel and a large open space component.
No, no, I hear what you're saying, and I think there benefits to clustering, for sure. I just haven't, I'm just voicing to you that I don't know of another one. If you could point me to one, then I would be better informed. Or maybe, you know, it'd be new news to me, but, or show me someplace else. Because if it fits within what we're allowed to do, I would consider it if I could see it. Or you would explain it and, you know.
Yeah, we can take this further with some examples and such. We've done in other municipalities.
But I don't, what I don't understand is how those units, because you, what I'm looking at is five structures, and you've got, I think, seven lots here.
Yes.
So how does that translate?
Well, we were looking at equating potential bedrooms of a seven lot project.
I think that's where you're.
To a number of bedrooms in a clustered.
I think that's going to bite you the wrong way.
Okay.
Just from my experience is that, that doesn't translate.
Okay, okay.
I, it may, but I don't see.
You don't need to draw the two against the other. Seven lots may not be the determining factor here.
No, but what I'm saying is he's proposing, he's showing us five versus seven. And I'm saying if you're consistent, I don't want to, maybe I'm misunderstanding it, but the process that you go through when you're trying to do clustering is you do a traditional subdivision plan that meets all the requirements. And if your, if your lot count is then seven, you can then change the setbacks and the road and all the rest of that, frontage and area and all the things that clustering give you as vocabulary.
Correct.
And then you can develop seven units. You're saying, I want to take, I think, I'm paraphrasing what I think you're trying to tell us.
Right.
Is that you're taking the number of bedroom units from these seven lots and you're putting them into five structures?
Yes.
And I think, I don't, I don't see a road to get there.
Okay.
Not, not that I, I wouldn't be agreeable to seeing it, but I don't think there is a format in our laws that allow you to do that.
How many units would you end up with under this?
Well, this is just a sketch we showed of max density.
Conceptually, you would end up with?
We're showing just 30, but I mean.
30 dwelling units.
Yes, single bedroom.
No, no, no. 30 bedrooms doesn't do anything for us. We don't work in terms of bedrooms.
That could be 10 houses.
Are they 30, how many houses? How many dwelling units would there be in your conceptual plan?
Well, we started with a seven lot subdivision with four bedrooms each. We've got those, we've got those reviewed in terms of adequate size and treatment and septic and et cetera. And if we brought sewer and water to the site, we would, we'll get some sort of conversion from individual housing lots to connected lots in some manner. And as I said before, we, the conversion between individual lots and some sort of form of housing is something that we are looking for guidance to sort of.
I get it. How many housing units would you like to end up with if you had? No restriction on what you, I mean, based upon this. Are you looking at 30 separate houses?
Well, it could be either 31 bedroom or 15 two-bedroom. It could be along those lines. We're not, we're looking at basically a bedroom count of this form.
I don't, I'm kind of jumping ahead and I, I'm not trying to step on you, but I think the authority to do clustering, first of all, for this board to do it, comes from the town board. So the town board would have to give us the ability to use clustering. So we would have to take the plan that you've already developed.
Yes.
And you would have to go to the town board and ask for permission to do clustering.
Right.
That authority that comes back to us is not going to allow us to take the bedroom count. Because I've done this before.
Okay.
It'll give you, let's say you have seven lots. You're going to have seven lots to cluster.
Okay.
Now, whether those lots, each one has four bedrooms or three bedrooms or a bedroom or whatever, 12 bedrooms.
Doesn't matter.
Doesn't matter. It's one, it's one dwelling.
One dwelling relationship.
Okay?
Okay.
So you would have, you would have, in this case, seven dwelling units.
Yes.
In a, in an altered site plan that reduces road length and frontage and all those other things.
Yes, okay.
Right, all the other benefits of clustering.
Okay.
So I did.
To go beyond seven, you've got to change the zone.
Yeah, well, I mean, that's the key. I wouldn't get hung up on seven lots because they could propose five lots or maybe eight lots, right? I don't know, what's the zoning?
Zoning is single family.
R140.
140.
Yeah, it's single family. So in order to get to 30, you'd have to get a rezone to a multifamily.
All right, right.
Yeah, so.
And that's not us.
Yes.
Right, exactly.
Can I ask you one other question? Looking at the two plans you have up there.
Yes.
The, the second plan that you guys are looking to shoot for, what is the impervious area there compared to the single-family homes?
It's about the same. We made it equal.
That's the same as this, as a residential homes?
Approximately the same, yeah.
Just by looking at it, it looks like a lot more.
It, we can do the math for you, but it was pretty equal. Because of house sizes and the disturbing areas.
The driveways.
Driveways.
You can't even approach that.
This is.
Yeah.
All right, so I think your best bet is to meet with John and Robin.
Sure.
They will, I think, get you to the town board.
Well, you can't go to the town board yet.
Okay.
You guys have to establish lot count.
Yeah.
So proceed with the.
They, well, they're going to, I think they're going to have to go, we're going to have to go through the clustering formula, which will tell you what you're going to end up with, which cannot be more than what you can get conventionally.
Okay.
So your conventional layout has to have, it has to comply, as Bob said, it has to comply with all the zoning parameters as if you're doing a conventional subdivision subdivision.
It does.
Right, so if that's the lot count, they have to accept the lot count at seven.
Okay.
And be solid that that's what they would be able, if they went forward, to approve.
Right.
And then they will refer to the town board for the clustering authorization with a detailed memo.
Okay. Yeah, it's a work session. We're looking at other options, but if that's the direction, we would go that way. Okay, okay, that's pretty much it.
Thank you.
Very much.
Have a good night, guys.
You're right.
We have a ZBA referral, 0524. I'm going to mispronounce the name, sorry. Kuna? How are you?
Good evening, Chairman, members of the board. My name is Ruwah Kuna, and I'm proposing a two-family house on a 10,000 square foot in a R2Z zone.
It is R2. We've had a series of these kinds of things coming before us from time to time, where smaller lots that are in that neighborhood have been variances and things of that sort, so.
You've seen this, you've seen this one time before. I think you wanted to talk to the owner and applicant. And you now have a location map that shows a little more information, which is also one of your requests, in terms of sizes, I believe.
John, is there a precedent for this type of dwelling on 10,000 in the area?
Is there a precedent for?
Yeah, there is other.
For a house on a, on a lot of 10,000 square feet in this area? Yes, there is.
There is.
That usually happens, I, I think one thing that we did want to see was details on the adjacent lot that is owned in common. I don't know if we received that. But the two lots taken together are, usually if they are deficient in size, they're supposed to become one lot in order to render it zoning compliant. So that's one of the issues here.
Is that for us too? Is that for us to review or for the zoning board to review?
That's for the zoning board to review, but certainly in terms of the development of the town in situations like that, I think you guys have plenty of.
Okay.
Room to make opinions on.
When is the ZBA meeting?
Thursday.
Thursday.
Oh, is this?
Thursday.
And you're in front of them Thursday?
I am.
So we're taking a drive out there on our own?
Yeah.
Just to see that it, you know. Can we do that without getting ourselves in trouble and doing a memo between now and then?
Of course.
You don't violate any.
So you guys will do a site visit individually?
Yeah.
You'll let us know what you're thinking. We'll draft up a memo for your, all of your review to see that it captures generally what everyone was thinking.
Okay.
You want to do it that way.
So the yellow box that's on here, is that the footprint of the building?
Yeah, that's the lots.
That's the lot, 10,000 square foot lot.
That's the lot.
That's the lot, yeah.
So what else on that chart, though? Those are the, are the buildings around it?
And they're square footage. It's a, not accurate, but just anyone who had a two mailbox, those are the square footage.
These are the, these square footages are the other lots.
The ones you, you came here, two families?
Those are buildings, but these are the square footage.
With all the numbers.
All those numbers that you have on there are two, other two families.
Yeah, it goes as low as 4,661 square feet is the smallest, to the largest being 23,000 square feet.
And the neighbor behind you, is that the Yorktown Autobody?
It is, yeah.
And across the street, that large structure?
Synagogue.
That's a temple.
Well, there's a temple to the left and then a residential house on the right. Yeah.
This is the temple.
There's a church, there's a church and the temple's right across the street there.
You don't have Google Maps on there, do you?
Yeah.
This is the temple. This is the church.
Yeah, that's the temple.
Right. Okay, yeah, okay. I know where it is.
This we sold to Autobody.
All right, so let's take a ride out there, okay?
Sure.
We'll individual take a ride out. I would keep in touch with John and Robin just to see, you know, any comments back and forth. I mean, if all these other numbers are two families and have similar size and use.
You own lot 78, right?
I do.
It has a structure on it?
It has a two-family dwelling. It's on a 9,371 square foot house adjacent to that lot.
That's the one right next door?
Right next door.
Has a two-family dwelling?
It's a two-family.
And if you're facing it, it's to the left for everybody's orientation?
If you're facing the existing structures, it's to the right.
Right, I was going the other way.
The 9391 is the existing building?
9371 is the existing.
So the vacant lot is to the right of that?
It's a lot, empty lot. If you're facing the house, it's to the right, north.
Exactly.
Yeah.
Okay, I got you.
It's a nice looking building.
And didn't we determine last time that all the setbacks are in compliance?
Yeah, I don't think there were any variances.
Right.
Oh, setbacks. And the zoning is?
R110, which is minimum 20,000 square feet. I don't see the setbacks necessarily, but.
Who was on one of them? I think it's within the dash lines there. Is that, is that correct?
I.
If you looked at the plan, would you be able to tell us?
I don't have that copy with me, unfortunately.
Okay.
So this is a two-family?
Two-family duplex.
Okay, and this is, what's the size of this lot again? I'm sorry?
10,000 square feet.
10,000, so you'd have four units on less than 20,000.
Less than 20,000.
You got a utility pole right in the middle of your driveway there.
It's, it's a little to the, to the right a little bit, yeah.
That's going to be difficult to get that moved.
I asked the architect about that, and he said it wouldn't be an issue.
It's got Con Ed, Cable Vision, Verizon, all that?
On that pole.
I would strongly suggest reaching out to check if it's a Verizon or Con Ed pole. You could look right on it and see, you'll see if it's got a Mount Bell on it or a Con Ed. I would seriously look into seeing what the engineering would be to move that pole.
Okay.
And then consult your grandchildren.
I worked for a municipality and I, we've tried to move poles for sidewalks. And it is extremely difficult. Sometimes engineering, or their engineering department will box it out Sometimes engineering, or their engineering department will box it out, because they're usually put in a place where they're between. So I would seriously look into that or think about reconfiguring.
Yeah, this one starts there and crosses the street right from that point.
When I go out there, I'll take a look.
Yeah.
Alright, so we'll take a site visit.
Okay.
Keep in touch with Robin and John, okay?
Okay, anything else? Thank you for your time.
Take care, have a good night. Next, we have PJ Maxx, Yorktown Green Shopping Center. This is a discussion of the site plan. Location is 355 Downing Drive. How are you?
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, town staff and consultants. My name is Matthew Dudley of Harris Beach P L C, attorney for the applicant Oster Yorktown Properties LLC. We're here for a continued discussion of the site plan for this property. With me tonight, I have Jerry Desario from Jarmel Kiesel Architects and Engineers. And he is here to discuss some of the changes that were recently made to the plans based on the board's comments from last meeting.
Thank you.
Good evening, my colleague presented at the last meeting, John Kubita, he couldn't make it tonight, so I'm here to fill the board in on the changes from the last meeting based on the board's concerns. I think there were two items that I was informed on, one was the screening of the rooftop equipment was a big concern. The recommendation of the board, we got the original landscape plan for the center. Our office went out to the site. I'd say surveyed, but reviewed the area based on that plan. And what we've done is, we filled in the green marks along the top. We filled in the landscaping to try and mimic what was originally approved within that area of the DOT right away.
Was there anything when you did your survey resembling the approved original site plan?
There were gaps, there were a lot of gaps, whether a tree looked, there were some stumps, it looked like trees were definitely taken down.
Yeah.
Or whether they were dead or for whatever reason, but there were gaps when we went out there compared to what was originally approved. How it became that way, that we don't know.
Time probably.
So we've done our best to mimic what was there and fill in those gaps with evergreen trees. We're proposing adding 36. We call them the dwarf Norway spruces, so we'll start out eight to 10 feet. It shouldn't get more than 18 to 20 feet. That'll take about 10 years, they typically grow about a foot a year. So that's what we proposed up there to fill in the gaps. The other issue was the signage, the new signage. We have a new detail of the sign, it's now conforming. We have, this is the new detail down here. It's gonna be 30, each face will be 33 square feet. We're proposing one by the Burger King, that's gonna have two faces. And then one over by. Kear Street, which will be replacing the sign that's there now. That'll only have one face, so all three totals will meet the 100 square feet requirement. I think the only other changes were up the front. We were filling in, from the last time we were here, we showed the landscaping revision along the front. We went to the raised planters, we're gonna fill in the dirt squares with the brick to match existing. So everything's consistent along the front. And that's it from the last meeting.
Alright, so the signs are now compliant?
Yes.
The original landscaping plan will be complied with?
Yeah, well, we're gonna propose the trees along there, which will provide the screening that the board was concerned with for the rooftop equipment, yeah.
Okay, and I think the last time the sign was taken off the back of the building?
Yes, that's gone.
Alright, we have any other?
What did you just say about the bricks and the planters?
There's some areas where there were tree pits, they're dirt. So those are gonna get filled in with the brick pattern that's there now. Eventually, there's gonna be raised planters in that area. That's what we, that was proposed the last time.
I thought we were widening the existing openings.
Yes, they are getting widened.
So you're saying we're filling it in with brick?
Well, the ones, we're gonna fill them in, the ones that are dirt. But we're gonna be replacing or supplementing with the larger raised planters.
So I think John Tegger had mentioned there were a few that were, used to be trees and they weren't shown being replanted. Is that the areas you're talking about? So the ones that John was concerned about?
Well, it's part of the landscaping.
Original site plan, right.
Yes. But all the new landscaping will be in the raised boxes and they're wide, I think, let me, there are. Seven feet. Yeah, they're seven feet long by 39 or 40 inches wide, each planter.
And when you say raised, they are what?
They're gonna do like a block that matches the building. Sitting up, there was a concern that the other plants, the other trees were dying, they presumably from a lot of the salt and things used for snow removal. So we're just bringing them up a little.
And in those, in those, so that's, that's a measure to help protect from the salt? And in those, you'll have a tree in each one, I suspect, and some other low ground cover type stuff?
Yeah, we proposed a tree, a small trivet maple, and then some hollies and ornamental grasses around the outside.
So how raised up, what are you thinking?
I think it's six inches to a foot, yeah, not, nothing, not talking three foot high, just a small raise.
Yeah, any thoughts on that, John?
No, that's fine, obviously, it's not a planter that you cart to the site with three feet of soil in, obviously, right?
Yeah, they're gonna build them, the block will match the building.
And the tree will have the opportunity to spread its roots down into the soil to whatever extent it's.
Yeah, seven, seven feet wide is good for that sized tree.
Where do you stand now on the screening of the air conditioning units on the roof?
That's the plantings that we're supplementing along 118.
Because your original submission had included screening of the air conditioning units. And then you came back to us and you said you were removing that, can you tell me?
They took all it off, so now we're replacing it with.
Can you tell me why?
The decision to remove the screening of all the units? I think it was because of the quantity of, there's a lot of units that are going up there. So now we went with the tree screening.
Well, I had asked, and my question is still unanswered. There was a proposal, your original proposal to screen the individual air conditioning rooftop units. And I suggested that the parapet wall be increased to screen the entire roof area rather than do the individual units, because I thought the math on doing that was to your advantage. It was probably half of the amount of material needed. And I asked for somebody to do the math on that and I've never heard an answer to my request. All I heard was it's now been removed, which doesn't satisfy me at all. I don't know.
Are you opposed to the natural screening?
I am, because it's gonna take 10 years for it to happen and it was never maintained, it got to this condition. And the approving resolution originally calls for either landscape screening or increasing the parapet wall, and it's in the resolution. And since the screening was never maintained, and I doubt that it'll be maintained going forward, and we're gonna wait 10 years for it to be effective, I want to see the screening on the parapet wall.
I don't, the road, 118 is much higher than our site, I think that was brought, so even a six-foot tree would be above a driver's eye. Because the concern is, I understand, when you're driving here, you can see the roof.
I took pictures myself, it's part of our package. Seated in my car, you can see the entire roof on 118.
By putting trees, even an eight-foot tree, is gonna be higher than your driver's eye and you won't be able to see down onto our roof.
I'm not convinced.
I don't see why we have to screen an air conditioning unit on a commercial building. I do not see that.
It was part of the.
There's no reason to screen it, yeah, an air conditioner is an air conditioning unit, same as a brick side of a building.
It's in the approving, it's in the existing approving resolution.
Yeah, but they want to change that, they want to put it.
And the wall you're talking about would have to be structurally engineered and pretty substantial, because we're so much lower.
Are you gonna tell me that the screening around the air conditioning units would have to be structurally engineered?
A screen around each unit?
Right.
I don't know what the applicant's feeling, I was like, we could do it, I think.
You use super, super steep studs or screw gun and some material?
I'm thinking this is more attractive than seeing all those screens on a roof, that's my opinion.
Well, I think if we can get commitment of maintenance of that area, it needs it badly. Right, I mean, right now, it's invasive, it's, you know, nothing.
Maybe you want to read the approving resolution that was done?
Yeah, so this is on page six of the original planning board approval. Modify landscape plans show one, to minimize the visual impact of this development on the major thoroughfare in Yorktown Heights. Increase the landscaping along Route 118 to ensure adequate year-round screening of the rear of the center, or extend the parapet along the top of the building around the back stores at least to a height of three feet, excuse me, to visibly shield the HVAC work from the road.
Do you have an oar in there?
Could you please just give me the date of that resolution that you're using?
March 10th, 1997.
You have a, you have an oar in there, don't you?
But that resolution was for one, one building, that was for, that was for Kmart, which only had a few air conditioners.
If I may just respond briefly? Town staff was kind enough to provide us a revised resolution of July 10th, 2000. And in that resolution, they changed that aspect of the prior resolution. And they said, provide 24 abreviate near the Kear Street Route 118 intersection to complete the partial stand of abreviate and provide visual buffering in lieu of the parapet set forth in the earlier resolution.
Can I ask one other question and you'll probably be able to? So when we met a few meetings ago, I think the intent was to utilize the existing equipment for the HVAC. And I think it was our opinion at the time that when you break these, this one space up into multiple, that most likely all that equipment's gonna have to go and get replaced. What's the status of that, that engineering?
The, do you mean about the full construction, like mechanical?
So they were gonna, they were gonna utilize the existing equipment that was there. I thought that dropping it up to three different or four different units, that you were gonna have to then replace those units on the roof, therefore adding to the.
There's gonna be more units than what's existing now for this configuration of stores, many more, yeah.
So when you re, or when you take all that existing equipment off and you put more and new equipment up there, I don't think the locations are then necessarily set in stone, right?
I believe, there are design drawings ready for building department, if that's what you're asking, we have that layout and design, yeah.
So you went to an engineer who does that type of work?
Our office.
Your office does?
That's always full.
So now you've got four different stores. Existing equipment, as we suspected, is gonna be removed. And new equipment placed on the roof to heat and cool these facilities over here. Is there any way we could see where that equipment's gonna be? Because the closer I think you put it to the back end of the building, there is something back there, right? If we clear, there was nothing back there?
I mean, you at least can provide a roof plan, if that's what you're asking for, that shows all the equipment.
We should see that.
So on the roof itself, do you have, there's gotta be some kind of barrier from, there's gotta be some parapet there, right?
I believe so, I'm not 100% sure what's there now.
In the back, I don't, I don't think there's a parapet.
Well, even if it's a foot, I mean, and again, if, and again, I don't know how far along you're sizing up the equipment and specking all that out.
We can provide a roof plan that shows it all.
If they put it, I'm sure they can improve the location rather than what we're looking, and I'm sure that whatever equipment you put up there is gonna be very different than equipment that was put there many years ago.
Yeah, I mean, they're more efficient, size-wise, I don't know.
Well, you're breaking from one to four. So I'm sure there's gonna be a difference in the equipment, the size of it, type, right? Because 30 years ago, whenever this was put in, this is, you know, it was equated to a 1970s car to a car now, very different animal. So I think as the architects, I think you've heard, at least from the most outspoken member of the board, about being able to see this equipment. And I'm sure you're the design professional, you're gonna want to make it as pleasing as possible.
Just for the record, I'm a civil engineer, not the architect.
We like you more than. But again, as an engineer, you're designing for them, right? So I'm sure that that could be looked at. Because I think what was being talked about earlier was, I think, the architect that proposed fencing in all these units. And they said they were gonna remain, and we thought otherwise. And the thought was that take that existing boxed in and just run it along the back. Nothing fancy, a fence or something along those lines. But now we're hearing that all that equipment's coming off and new equipment's being put on. So I think we have to, and there was another application earlier with the same type of thing, where they just went and switched it and it was obviously not put in the right location, and I think that's something.
Good question.
As soon as you can get that to us, we're gonna tear that.
We have a roof plan, a chills, all that.
What was done with Uncle Giuseppe's, I wasn't on the board at the time.
I'm sorry? They did a loading?
In terms of?
We didn't do anything on the site, we didn't do anything on the building.
No, I don't think anything on the.
Just some minor stuff outside.
See what the board says, I'd.
I'd be very interested to see what the mechanical engineer shows.
For the do spaces.
Because you're taking, what's up there now is gonna be gone.
Right.
And you're putting four separate units in so they can each have their own control.
I mean, ultimately, this is a question of aesthetics. There's nothing functional with regard to a fence on the side of the building or a raised parapet.
Purely aesthetics.
And to me, what that area is struggling with right now is poor landscaping. Even, you know, if that landscaping were improved, then I don't know who would maintain it, we'd have to determine, I mean, it's in the state right away, is it, is that?
That's correct.
State's not gonna maintain it, town's not gonna maintain it. It's gonna turn into what it is now.
Guys, gents, sorry, gentlemen, if you wanna, if you could just take it outside, please, thank you.
We found out who's maintained it thus far, no one.
Well, right.
And I'm not pointing fingers, I'm just saying it has not been maintained, so that's what we can expect going forward. So given that fact and that the reality of that, I think the screening that I'm talking about would cure that concern. It doesn't need to be maintained.
My only concern is it may just look more industrial.
That's right.
I mean, it's a commercial space, right, and I think if you're driving along that road at 40 miles an hour, most people do 60.
If you take your eyes off the road, you're gonna run off the road.
Yeah, I think the.
I took these pictures at 60 miles an hour, very sharp.
But I think that when we're thinking of the aesthetics, having that, you know, the overgrown invasives and unmaintained area there in front of a metal fence, for lack of a better term, is not an improvement. I think we're talking about an aesthetic issue.
Absolutely agree.
So who, who could we make responsible for the maintenance of that landscaping? The applicant? I mean, it's again.
You can't give them the permission to go onto state right away to maintain something that's in the state control.
And yet, we're giving them permission to plant 30 trees in it?
Well, they'd have to get a permit from DOT, which they will.
Now, does the permit from DOT, they must have had a permit from DOT in 2000?
Yes.
Right.
So does that still hold or how does that work?
That's something for DOT.
You guys were supposed to look into that last time. Just, that was, that was something that the planning board had asked you to look into, to see if you still had that permit or whatever. The other thing is, I was under the impression you guys were also here to speak about the facade work while all of this other stuff was getting hashed out. I'm not sure if you're aware of that.
No, my understanding that the facade was discussed at the prior meetings, there weren't any comments with the facade. Yeah, it went to the architectural review board and.
I just think going back to the equipment, what's there is not going to be, and you're gonna be putting new equipment up. And I think we really need to know what we're dealing with, because it could either be much larger or it might be much smaller. I'm gonna think that it's gonna be smaller, because you're spreading it out from one to four. But I think we need to see that, because the concern is the impact from the state road. So I think the devil's in the details, I think we really need to see that. And I think the quicker you can get that to us, from your office, the better. I mean, is that, everybody think that's a?
I think that's part of it, obviously. Is there any way for us to convey the maintenance of the landscaping? Or convey may not be the right word? Make them responsible, bond?
Well, when you approve a landscaping plan, it needs to be maintained and that's enforceable specifically in the zoning code?
What if it's in state?
Okay, so what would happen is if it's in state right of way, for instance, there would be an action that says you're in violation of your landscaping plan, it's no longer compliant. They would need to go back to DOT and get their permit. If they could not obtain a permit, they would need to come back to this board to modify the landscaping plan. But you can, you can stop the work, I mean, you can actually force some maintenance as an enforcement action in the zoning code for the landscaping plan. Of course, I'm acknowledging that DOT has dominion over their property and they may deny the permit 10 years later, let's say. In that case, they would need to modify their landscape plan in front of the board.
You'd need a license agreement with New York State, right?
You probably are getting a use and occupancy permit. But I'm not sure of that in terms of landscaping, I don't know how, what, if they, how they issue that. It may be just be a work permit.
That's all in there. So Rich, the other thing is, I know that the building department is asking for, and I believe they're talking specifically to the roof, a plan, the plan, that their current plan doesn't provide enough information to. plan doesn't provide enough information to garner code compliance, and they're asking for revised plans with changes, additional additions, bubbled and lettered, addressing, locating changes on plan. Review will continue. So until they submit something that's going to address those changes and where those changes are, which I believe is part of the whole roof.
So I think everybody on the town's end's looking for the same thing.
Gotta see if the original landscape plan, which was approved, is still in effect.
It is, it's part of the site plan approval. They want to check it.
Okay, so?
It's died off, it wasn't cared.
Resolution calls for an annual, that's what, that is, calls for an annual review, and it's a surety bond to cover not only landscaping, but parking and other things. So.
That wasn't that long, though.
No. I mean, since that language was there, it's not new, a new issue that we would bring to the table.
You mean, maintenance of the landscaping?
Yeah, that's what.
The only issue is that this addresses their property. We're talking about.
No, but.
Maintenance of landscaping that's not there and on their property.
Yeah, but one of the things, it says obtained New York State D O T approval for all work to be done in the New York State D O T right of way. That's part of the resolution.
Does that include ongoing maintenance? I guess is the question, you know, I don't know if New York issues an ability for somebody to continually go into their property to maintain.
Well, I think, I think they do. So for instance, if you think of the Lowe's building, that slope of the ramp is planted, was planted as a part of the site plan requirement. Also, the state required that, but they are the ones that need to maintain it. So I think they are supposed.
They being Lowe's.
They being the site owner, yeah, are supposed to maintain that. So I think you can. For instance, Patriot Garden is located on state D O T property, and we have a use and occupancy permit to have the skate park and Patriot Garden there, and we maintain it and so on and so forth. So I think it's possible. I don't know all the particulars, but.
I like, I kind of agree with Rod's concept of less industrial looks, that if we can figure out a way to satisfy the D O T requirements, put the burden on the applicant to not only install it, but maintain it in the future, I think that would accomplish the screening issue for us in a better way than you're saying. I like that.
Who maintains the sidewalk that's there, John? Like in the winter, do we shovel? Does the town shovel that sidewalk?
Yes.
And that's in the state right of way?
That's in the state right of way, and we got a permit for that, and went through months and months with the state to, A, build it, and we're responsible for that part of it.
And again, the hope is that we're gonna have more residents in the Soundview property that will walk to town.
Yes.
That'll utilize that sidewalk, utilize that area. There used to be, there probably still is a bench there, which is probably a nice thing for the folks in Jefferson Village. But again, it's a, it is a major thoroughfare, but if we can soften it, that wouldn't be a bad thing. And maintain it.
That's the key.
Has anybody seen Chipotle in Lowe's?
Oh, boy.
Have you gone out there and seen? And, you know, when you see the building and the lot, it's one thing, but when you see now the landscaping in place.
Looks good.
I haven't seen it since it was landscaped.
Oh, it's.
So just before that, so I haven't been out there. Very, very attractive look in sight. Really is. I mean, they did a nice job. And again, the cream of the crop is, or the cherry on the top is that landscaping. It really, take a look at it.
It's nice.
It's a very nice looking.
So do we have specifics in terms of what the suggestion is for the plantings, or?
No, it's in there already.
The original site plan.
So, no, what I'm saying is, are we referring back to the original site plan?
I think between that, all the language in.
In the original.
It just wasn't cared for, so it went.
I understand. So we're going back and saying, do what was the original?
Force the original site plan, yeah.
Well, I think you said you're using Norwegians, Bruce?
Because they're obviously, they require the least amount of maintenance. So grow, cause the other concern are the power lines.
Can you handle the voltage?
I'm sorry. The other concern were the power lines, so we're trying to keep them low, cause your utility companies could come in and.
Mm-hmm.
Lop them.
Lop them out, which may have happened also.
But I think we need to see the equipment, where it's gonna be located, what the new equipment is, what's coming off. I think, and I, but I agree with the, and not to diminish what you're saying, cause I hear you. But until we see what they're putting up there.
Yeah.
Cause it could be a completely different animal. I am very much in making sure that the original application, site plan approval was, is adhered to. Just that I would hope someone twenty years from now, twenty-five years from now would see something that we wrote and make sure it's adhered to.
Are you still here?
You're still on the board still.
Jeremy, Rich.
But the sign off the back is gone. The individual signs are now compliant, I think more towards what Rob and.
Is that, I don't, we heard, we heard the monument signs are compliant, right?
Yes, I don't think there's any issue.
But there's the other issue of the sign on the front.
The front.
That was not in compliance. That's a separate issue, I think.
I'll have to go to the department and the sign guy and get it approved.
And I think, was it Science Inc. that was here last time?
Yeah, it was stuck in the middle.
Yes, that's being handled by T J Maxx.
Okay, so they gotta, that's a separate issue. But with this itself, wanna see the equipment, what's getting proposed up there, as does the building department. We wanna see what the story was with New York State D O T. And I think once we get those answers, we can move forward. Am I misspeaking at all?
No. And it sounds like you have on that plan, the landscaping, you saying it's gonna mimic the original plan?
With some.
Changed the planting.
But the amount.
Exactly what was.
Type of plants and so forth.
But the intent as far as quantity and filling in the gaps is what we did. But we didn't mimic the exact same plants that were originally approved.
Tweaking it a little bit.
All right.
But the amount and the intent is still there.
And I think we would need.
Yes.
Commitment by the applicant to maintain.
Yeah.
That's right, it's okay to fill the gaps, but if they die and.
Yeah, that was, I think that was the intent of the original proof.
Yes. So if that, if you're changing the landscaping, we should have that referred out and make sure that that passes muster on our advisory boards, and then we can go forward. We're gonna go that way.
All right? Any questions?
No, thank you.
Good.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks, guys. All right, next we have a town board referral, a local law-mending chapter two seventy-five vehicles and traffic.
You wanna do that, or you wanna do Jacob Road?
Let's do Jacob Road.
I thought Jacob was off.
No.
Those guys in the back are just, they're just fans.
You have any comments on vehicle and traffic?
All right, so we'll move, so Jacob won't be last, he'll be next to last. Jacob Road Solar, this is a discussion of site plan and special use permit. Locations eighteen zero five Jacob Road.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, we wanna actually comment on the last item first. Good to see you. Just for the record, my name is David Cooper, partner with the law firm Azarren and Steinmetz, here representing Free Stone Renewables, which is the contract leasee of a fifteen-acre parcel in the town's R one, one sixty zoning with the address of eighteen oh five Jacob Road. We are processing a site plan and special permit application to develop a three point one two five megawatt solar energy facility at the site. We're here tonight to continue the public review. With me is Jamal Batar, the Vice President of Development from Free Stone Renewables, excuse me, and Nicholas Bonvas from La Bella, the project engineer. We are here to go over some updates to the site plan and some visual analyses, which the board requested at the last time we were before you. We did, I think, preview the update to the, to the site plan with respect to the buffer area, which was originally proposed to twenty, now it's been expanded to eighty. I'll let Nick go through everything, but I know you've seen that piece, but we didn't have the visual analyses ready at that time, last time we were before you, so we wanna go through that as well. We recognize that there is a moratorium in place with respect to solar development. In our most recent letter to the board, we've acknowledged that we are proceeding, obviously, at our own risk at this point pursuant to your moratorium. Again, we do believe it's best to continue to process this application, cause we do think it will inform both this board and the town board as it's reviewing the code and looking at amendments to the code, both in a way of how best to continue investment in solar energy, but also be responsive to visual concerns and other concerns that have been raised by the board. We do think that we're, this site in particular, and the way that this applicant is approaching the proposal, it shows you a way to be sensitive to visual impacts and other concerns that you've raised, but also still yield a beneficial and needed solar development. So let me turn it over to Nick to go through the amended, the amendments, excuse me, the amendments, the change of the modifications to the site plan, as well as the visual analyses, and then we'll be back to answer any questions and talk about next steps.
Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you, David, for queuing this up. So I will start with the northern property boundary. I believe you already saw this, but I just wanted to reiterate here that we are providing eighty-foot separation between the property line and our limit of disturbance to address potential visibility of the site from our neighbors to the north. And as, as we discussed at the, at the last meeting, we would, we were going to extend our limit of clearing from, from the western property boundary to eighty feet as well, matching what we were showing on the, on the north side. Also discussed last meeting was providing the setbacks from the existing residences along our borders to the nearest panels. So we are showing that from several different points along the, along the boundary. We didn't hit every home, only, you know, basically the nearest residences in each of you. So in addition to providing the buffer, the extended buffer, as discussed, we did review the, we did revise our visual simulations. So this is a view from Jacob Road, north of the site. You can see here, the camera is pointed south by southeast into the array. So this is the existing view, and this would be the proposed view now with that eighty-foot buffer in place. So you can see there's very little change there with the, the amount of trees that would be left in place by that eighty-foot buffer. This is another view from Jacob Road, essentially at the proposed, a little, little east of the proposed entrance, looking southwest in into the array. Again, this is the existing, and then the proposed, this view is a little interesting because there is so much vegetation to remain, that we have essentially a simulation of where the, where the array would be if there was nothing in the way to block that view. And as you can see in the, in the line of sight from that same position, there's a lot of existing vegetation here that's gonna remain in place. Certainly. So David was asking me to look at the, to demonstrate the topography as well. So just going back quickly to the, to the first one, you're kinda looking, from Jacob Road, you're kinda looking up and over this lawn here. So the, the array itself is actually hidden by the, by the change in topography. And you can see that here from Jacob Road on the left, looking out over the lawn, there is a bit of topography here that is kinda intercepting the, the view of the, of the Similarly, here. Actually, excuse me, this one, the, the array itself is a little lower than the, than the road over from, from the north and east of the, of the array. But because of the, excuse me, because of the vegetation to remain, we don't expect that there would be visibility of the, of the array itself. And here's a view, excuse me, here's a view from the west, looking south and east into the array. Our existing view, and then the proposed view. Again, this here is showing what would be visible if not for the, the topography and the vegetation that's gonna remain in place. So you can see here from the end of South Gate Drive, again, looking south and east into the array, there's a landform that's going to be intercepting the, intercepting the view and making it so that there would be very limited visibility. We would expect no visibility of the, of the array from that position. And here is another position from the west, looking east towards the array. Our existing and our proposed. And again, you can see because of the, because of the change in the, in the amount of vegetation that we are removing, because we're leaving the eighty-foot buffer in place, there is a significant amount of vegetation that will remain and will substantially limit the visibility of the array. And this is another view where we have a little bit of topography that would be helping to, to limit the visibility.
And just to add, these photos were taken during leaf-off conditions during the winter. When it's springtime, leaf-on conditions, the visibility would be completely covered from what you're seeing today.
So here's another view from, from one of the cul-de-sacs west of the, west of the site, looking east. And again, we're looking at the existing and then the proposed. You can see there's some, there will be a distinct change in the vegetation that would be removed, but there's no visibility of the array behind the, the topography to remain. We also added some simulations here just to show how the landscaping that we intend to plant would kinda fill in that view over the years. And again, here's looking at the line of sight. There's some, the topography here is going to restrict the visibility.
Go back to that previous picture, just for one second.
Absolutely.
And then what are we seeing there? So when you, those are the tree, pine trees that we're seeing there, those three, those are proposed plantings?
Those are proposed plantings, yes. So I will go back to the site plan quickly, actually, let me go to the landscaping plan. So that last view, I believe, was from this cul-de-sac here. So we are looking at planting vegetation at the extent of our limit of clearing to help kinda restore some of the, to help offset the, the trees that we're removing and to help with, with screening of the, of the proposed array.
So can you go back to the picture now?
Absolutely.
And so behind those trees, in between those trees.
Yes.
Am I seeing the array?
That is actually vegetation on the other side of the parcel. The, the array is down here.
Okay.
Yeah.
You go to the top.
Yeah. So you can see in the, in the line of sight here, the, the visibility is actually cut off by the, the topography.
I see.
And your, your tree planting will be essentially denser than what's shown, I think, right? According to the plan? You have a double row staggered?
So we don't have a whole lot of...
Not a double row.
Not, not a double row on this side because of the land available. We, you know, we obviously need the fence there for security and for, for safety. So with the, with the land available, we only have space for a, a single row. On the other side, however, we are providing a double row, which will help to limit visibility from the, from the proposed trail.
So on that piece of property, can you, can you go to the line of sight diagram?
So you were asking about the double row here.
I was asking, well, on your plan, it doesn't show a double row now. I see a double row, so I'm not sure which one it is.
Yes, that, that's fair. These line of sights were produced based on the original plan. They have not been updated to reflect the, the additional planting. Nevertheless, like, we're not actually showing any of the proposed planting in the line of sight profiles itself. These are really here just to demonstrate how the topography itself will, will help limit the...
Where's the fence line on that cross-section, on that topography one? Does that indicate?
Uh, yeah, right here.
What I'm getting at is if you're, if you're standing in the backyard of either of those homes, you have a better perspective at viewing it, according to the sightline diagram as I see it. So I think that as you've shown in the rendering, the pine trees that you're planting, I think you're showing them spaced apart, whereas I think that they will not be spaced apart. Is that correct? We're creating a wall of evergreen shrubbery there.
Correct. The, the vegetation here, let's see, we do have the spacing indicated. I thought we had the spacing indicated. It's my mistake.
It doesn't matter. What I'm saying is, as shown, it's showing a wall, and I think that would be the expectation. So it screens it to the greatest amount that it can.
Yeah, that, that's, that's accurate, yes. This, this spacing is what would be recommended based on the, the species that we're, we're planting here.
Right. So one of the, right, one of the next steps has to be, you know what the species is, you know what you're planting it at, and within, you know, like, two to three years, that has to be forming that kind of wall to, to make that green wall, so to speak.
Understood.
Right.
I don't know how instructive it is to, to keep going through every single, every single view. I'm happy to continue if you'd like, or we could look at some leaf-on photos that we recently got to kind of show how these views would look in the summer months.
I think leaf-off is the most critical.
Yeah. I gotta tell you, I, I've seen two projects in my days, one very recent, and one when I was with the town in North Castle. It was a Mariani's Garden, right next to Town Hall in, in Armagh. And this guy came in and he planted a forest, like, within a week. So it was gone. So when they say they can only get small, this guy planted trees, his name was Mark Mariani. I don't think the garden center's still there anymore, but he built a wall. And last week, in the town of Greenberg, Burncliff Cemetery, put up a wall of vegetation to hide this twelve-foot structural wall. It was a decorative wall, but the residents wanted landscape behind it. Gone. Overnight. Gone. So I've seen things now where, but I hear is, oh, it's going to take a while, and...
No, no.
Yet this, it was overnight, these things virtually disappeared from the line of sight. So I, and I know our code reads, and I think you guys have another application in front of us, where there's some real back and forth about the way it's written, that it's supposed to be fully screened. And, you know, I don't know if you guys have seen, we got two letters today from a particular resident on three-three-eight-five Gomer Street. They're opposition of the application. And there's also a memo from the conservation board now, that the conservation board is not in favor of this application, which will result in significant adverse environmental impact and change the character of the abutting neighborhoods. I don't know if you've seen...
Well, yeah, we, we've seen both.
Okay. So I, again, I think, and obviously there's still a moratorium in place, and I'm not sure where that is in the world, but I personally see things disappear overnight with, with the correct landscape. So, I mean, if someone's in their backyard, and again, this was the same conversation we have with another application, I don't think we got, do we ever get any real clarity on that? Is that going to be addressed in the, the moratorium, that language?
Yes.
Okay. But I think that's going to be, again, the objections that you get, from our neighbors next door.
Yeah, and, and we understand that. The, the, I think part of the reason of the visual analysis is, is to, to limit what we're actually looking at, right? Because you, unlike, I know, I know the site in Greenberg, and I think I know the site that you're talking about in, in Newcastle as well, they didn't, they didn't have, they didn't have that long of a, of a, of a perimeter to, to screen, but...
Didn't, but it's still...
Right, but the, yes, and I'm not saying, look, you know...
They went to, I mean, especially with Mariani Gardens, when I tell you they put up a forest, no joke, big, big trees. I'm not saying you have to go that nuts.
Right.
But clearly, if the will is there, you could make things go.
Yeah. The, the, I think mostly what we were showing, because, because remember, the landscaping plan itself is conceptual, has been fully developed, but is, is the topography itself and how that interacts with where these, these panels would be, would be seen from. Because the, I think, stepping back, if you look at some of the, the comments, putting the, the conservation board aside somewhat, but, but putting, some of the comments is, it presents it as, as if you're going to be able to see this from every single place, and, and it's going to be an eyesore, where that's really, that's not accurate, right? The, the issue itself is, the topography is going to be hiding most of these panels from most view sheds. If there are specific view sheds that, that are of concern, then yes, that's what we should be focusing on, but, but the idea of saying, look, you can see this from anywhere, and, and I don't care how many trees are going to be planted, and I know this is not what your board is saying, but there's some people have suggested that, that's just not accurate, right? And so what we're trying to do from a record perspective is kind of hone in on, on those views that people, that, that this board is really concerned with, so that we can work through that with a landscaping plan, and also however buffering, et cetera.
Well, then you need, you need to circle the...
We can't, not during work session. I'm sorry. I'm, I'm really, no, I'm sorry, please, no operators.
You need to circle the entire property, or we're really focused on those areas where visibility is the issue. It seems to me that if you're saying there are areas along there that essentially it's invisible or, or unseeable, for lack of a better term, why wouldn't you take all of that landscaping and concentrate in the areas where it's needed?
Well, well, I think also because the, you want to, you want to keep buffers, you planted buffers, right? You've, you've heard your, your conservation board and others say, well, you can't, you know, we don't want to lose a single tree. And so in order to mitigate the tree loss, that, that has to occur when you're going to use this, this site, whether you're using it for solar or any other use, you do want to, want to plant everywhere, right? Where, where there's availability, you want to plant. I'm saying is that we hear, you know, we, we hear the boards saying, they've been saying since day one, look, we, we are concerned about visual impacts. And so as we move through the secret process and the review process, I think it's, it's, you know, on us, but also working with you to find out where those actual locations are, so that we can hone in on that. That's really what, what, why we're, we're trying to show you the topography and, and the angles and, and, you know, focus in. I think we've already heard a lot of people concerned about the, the, it's the western side, correct? And I'm, I'm, yeah, the western side, so that's why the most, a lot of the visuals have been from that, from that area.
I think what we're going to need on our end, and we don't have to go through every picture here, but on our own, we need to go through every picture.
Yeah.
We really need to see that, the, the, the topography, what's proposed, what can be proposed, and what the impact. And again, our code is, even though there's some dispute about it, and there is a moratorium in effect, right now, it's relatively clear that the intent was that to be, from residential, to be fully screened.
One of the questions I have, and clearly you, you're going in the right direction in terms of answering where the views are from existing homes, and I don't know if the moratorium's going to answer this, but one of the things I'm thinking about, even on your own property, you have undeveloped portion of the property that's in front of us, that has the potential for future residential development. And there are other lots that are, I think contiguous to your property, that are, that don't have homes on them, that are buildable lots. The point I'm getting at is that we're looking at a moment in time where there are houses now, and you've given us photographs, and you've got overlays, which is all good, and what we'd expect. But my question is, is do our regulations require us to look at the future potential lots and a home that could be on that lot in the future, that is zoned residential now? I don't know how we answer that.
I, I don't know where, is there a specific area along the, the site that you're referring to?
Well, what I'm, what I'm talking about is I remember when we walked the property out there, you, someone, I don't remember who I was talking to at the time, and it said that part of, part of the land is being proposed for a solar farm, but part of the land is, has future development potential for residential use.
Oh, oh, on this fifty-nine acre lot?
Exactly.
Oh, well, that's, yes, but that, that's...
Right. So what I'm, so what I'm saying is that, let's assume, just looking forward, that we come to a point where we approve a site plan for solar development, and then the property comes in later in time for residential development, and we have a residential home built on a lot that now has a view of this property. How far do we have to consider that issue? Because it's zoned residential now, the expectation is it will become residential. Do we have an obligation to, to look to that level of detail or not? I don't know.
I think we do. I don't, I think that's what came up at the other application.
Yeah, I don't, I don't, I don't think that's a big issue, because it's, it's the same owner, right? That, that same owner is...
Understand, but...
It's still the code.
That, that's how I became aware of it, but I'm saying that our code, I don't know how far this board has to look forward in terms of where does a house get sighted on the same owner's property, in terms of our obligation to look at that issue of view.
Yeah, I don't, I don't, I don't, I don't think there's much of a dispute there, in terms, in terms of if, if you wanted to put the subdivided parcels, the four subdivided parcels on the map and show, show the, the view shed, I, I don't think that's an issue one, because the owner, who's going to be the landlord of, on, on, on our property...
Has control.
Is in control, but also there, there's a significant buffer on that side anyway.
No, I'm aware of that. I'm just saying, should we look at a view from, from those points as well? We're, we're taking the examples where the homes exist today. I'm saying maybe we should further that...
I, I think we have to, and then Robin will remember, we trudged out in an all-terrain vehicle on a piece of property, it was snow all over the place, we're out in the middle of the woods, on the edge of the property line, looking at the, the flags and everything. Could it be, you know, from, because this person walked, they had a walking path...
Right.
Along the back of their property, and they didn't want to...
They want to see it.
Yeah, and it was, again, I don't know where that ended up, but, you know, this was in a, a solar farm in the middle of nowhere.
Right. My, my only point is that that was an existing home, we're looking at existing homes now. I think we have an obligation to look at potential homes.
I think we already have them sighted, at least on that side.
Right. No, no, we, I'm saying, some of it is known, but I think we just need to focus on that as well, so...
You make a very good point. I think the obligation that we have is that this is in a residential zone.
Right.
Whether it's developed yet or not.
Exactly. Yeah, I'm saying, we're looking at it at a moment in time, but with the expectation that homes are going to get built there, so we should, we should look forward and...
I, I'm not going to, I'm not going to dive into the debate as to, as to how far in the future you look, because I think that's actually the secret issue is to hypotheticals. But at the end of the day, this board has already approved the subdivision for those lots with sighting of, of potential lots.
Right, it's already done.
From, from a, this application perspective, from a secret perspective, if the board is saying, look, we're concerned, we just want to make sure that, that the views from, from those known lots, or potential development of known lots, then yes, we, we can put that up there. I'm not, we're not, we're not saying, no, don't look there, that, that's fine. Initially, I, I was questioning, because I thought you meant around, like, somewhere else around off, off, off the site.
I mean, wherever it's applicable, I'm making the point of, you know, warehouse could be in the future, known to us now. That's all.
Okay.
We're, we're saying the same thing, I think.
On the, on those lots, yes. The, the, with, with respect to the visuals, actually, let me move on from the visuals. What other items does it, does the board want from us as you're going through this?
Well, I think you're going to have to work with Dan Ciarce, the town engineer, and I know he was here earlier. Obviously, the conservation board is not in favor of the application at this point.
Well, yeah, I mean, we, we met with them, and tried to have a, a conversation about the balance and, and, you know, that, yes, there's value in conservation, but also, you know, you have to look at investment in, in renewable energy, and how do you, how do you reach that balance? Their response was, look, we just, we don't, we don't want trees taken down, we want it on buildings. So I'm not sure that there's anything further that we can do vis-à-vis that comment for this application, because unless, you know, we're not going to be covering the entire site with a building and putting solar on top, I don't, I think we're kind of talking over each other.
Right. What other concerns we got, other than visual impact, environment? John, any thoughts?
Well, I, I think that my concern is from the homes that are bordering it, whether they be in Yorktown or Cortland.
Right.
So the, I'm a little concerned about the single row, and I would suggest that possibly the border and the fence is moved out, so you can get a double row possibly, on, on the, on the western side, which is at the lower side right now, so that when you are a resident of one of those homes, and you go out into your backyard, on the day it becomes operational or, or under construction, you're not looking at the undercarriage of these units, and you're looking at as little amount of solar infrastructure as possible, preferably not. I, I appreciate all of the work that was done, but when you're taking it from the cul-de-sac, you're, you're taking the benefit of the rise up the driveway, and then the backyard starts to slope towards where the array is. So I think, I think there's some detail that we have to look at from that area, which you can do with the line of sight. Very simple. You might have enough information to, to do it there, but I think what will be more, which will get us there in a more concrete way, is a double row that's staggered, so... Because that, that'll make that wall six, eight feet high immediately on the day that it's, that it's planted.
Do the simulations take it, I mean, the, the perspective from the road to the rear of the property is one thing, but if you're standing at the rear of the property, it's a completely different perspective.
Yeah, it can be, yeah, for sure.
I mean, and again, so do the simulations show that?
Well, the, no, these are from public view sheds.
Right.
Right, because typically, like, D E C regulations say, you take, you take your view sheds from public areas, because also...
Our don't. Our regulations don't say that.
No, no, it's, it's a, it's a guidance on, on how to take visual impact.
I understand. They'd have to get permission from the homeowner to go on the property, to take a picture from the edge of the property in order to do a simulation.
Yeah, a photo simulation, right, but I think without going there, you can do the line, line of sight.
That's all. You go to the border of the applicant's property...
Oh, I see, yeah, yeah, yeah.
And turn around and look that way. There you go. That's all.
Take a selfie.
And, and I, I think, I think what, we'll come into it a little bit, is what is in the intervening no man's land between your border and, and the fence line, because maybe something can be done in there, because as you get closer and further away with your screening, that changes the perspective of what you can see. So I think we should take advantage of all of that, that property to be as effective as possible.
We've, we've, we've got, we've, we got the visual, we, we, we're here, we're here in the visual.
You got the visual on the visual?
Yeah, right. Are there, are there other areas that you want, you want us to look into? Because, you know, we hear the stormwater with, with Dan.
I would talk to Dan Ciarce here. Make sure that he's set. LaBella's a good group, I don't know if they have a landscape architect that's going to be looking at this, right? But clearly you want, and I think this board, and we've seen clearly when projects are done correctly, how well they turn out, and where they aren't done correctly, how, what the detriment is, and we do not want to have any issues. So as we move forward, I think the critical part is the landscape... So as we move forward, I think the critical part is the landscaping and the, the engineering and the environment.
And the moratorium that we have in place right now, is part of the intent there to determine if we've maxed out on our concentration of solar arrays in Yorktown? Are we, are we trying to look at the idea of...
I think, I, I think that could be, uh, part of it, but the moratorium is so this way we could, um, uh, look at our law and, and enact something that's, I think, a little more effective and that has, uh, you know, you know, based on the, the knowledge that we have and, and the experiences that we've gone through. So that, that's where we are with that, and it's, it's under review, uh, but the moratorium is, I believe, six months. Uh, it doesn't have to be the entire six months. It, it, it'll be when, uh, when we, uh, you know, start the discussion and everything on, on an actual law.
But with maxing out, I think, and correct me if I misspeak, the utilities and the companies wouldn't be, if it was maxed out, they wouldn't be pushing it.
Right.
Right, 'cause I mean, and the governor has stated that by 20...
20, what Rob meant.
2030.
What I mean by maxed out, I mean, some towns may say some percentage of all of the open space in the town...
Oh, I get it, yep, yep, yep.
Sorry.
Area, you mean.
Is...
Gotcha.
Enough. It's almost like, uh, impervious...
Right, right, right.
...surface.
Yep.
They're not.
Next to the Solma River.
I, I would, I would add to your question, Rob, as is the town board considering changing the eligibility of certain zones to host this type of development?
Residential.
Because there are towns where you don't have solar on residence, you know, residential zones, and the town board opted to do that some years back. I'm wondering if that's under reconsideration at this point.
I mean, if you're, I, I don't know what the town board is thinking, and I won't comment on it, but if you're ask me, that would be something I would consider. You know, and, and, and also there, there are, there are situations where, you know, in commercial zones, we, uh, you know, we, our moratorium has affected, for example, that, uh, the project that came in where they wanna do the large-scale solar on, uh, what is it? The, uh, the car dealership. You know, and, and that was in front of us here. That, for me, my, my own opinion, it's exactly what I was looking for.
Right.
You know, something on rooftops, not ground mount. I mean, you know, these are things that I am going to have input on and be very, uh, vocal about, uh, when, when, when the time comes that we'll, we present everyone with, uh, with some version of a law.
Well, we, we, we look forward to, to being involved in that as well, uh, to, to, you know, when, when they're, when you're asking the, the public and applicants to weigh in. What I would say is, look at it empirically before, before you just say, look, no, we, we, we're, we're maxed out, or we can't have it in, in, in certain areas, it can only be in, in commercial areas, as to whether or not, I think it's true, you're right, to reach 70% renewables in six years now, right? 2030 is only six years, six years away. Right, they're, they're not doing that just to say, hey, local planning boards, you know, suffer through meetings where people are, are really up in arms. They're doing it because it's, it's necessary, right? From, from, from an environmental standpoint and from a, a renewable standpoint. And so what I'm saying is, there is a balance. There's a way to balance that in such a way where you, you find appropriate sites. What we're hearing tonight with respect to this application is, hey, potentially this is, i- i- is, is, is an appropriate site, potentially not, depending on, on visual, there's some other, you know, stormwater, et cetera, but clearly you're saying visual impacts. But, but in, in order to really reach that balance, you, I respectfully submit, you can't say all residential, uh, uh, districts, it can't, it can't be built in.
We don't have that in front of us.
I know, I know. It was just brought up. I was just brought up. I couldn't stop. I couldn't help myself.
What was, what was brought up was that we...
They can do that if they want to.
No, no, what was brought up was that we, we instituted a moratorium so we could look at the law and strike that balance. That's what was brought up. So please don't say that we're saying anything other than just that.
Good.
And that's, and that was my opinion, and that's how I feel about it, and I stand behind my opinion.
So right now, obviously, we're not sure what that moratorium's gonna yield.
Right.
You guys have decided to move forward. I think for the engineers, we need to, you need to show us, all right? Devil's in the details, all right? And we don't wanna get jammed up at the end, and so it's, it's on you guys to show us that this can go invisible, basically, and that it's gonna work, again, engineering, visual, and environment. We need to see that balance. That's your job to show us. Okay?
Yep.
All right. Thank you very much.
One more time.
Yeah. All right, last but not least, we have, uh, town board referral, amending chapter 275, vehicles and traffic. Any planning board issues, are planning issues with this one?
Which one is this? This, the EV, the ATVs stuff, right? So... What's different on this from the last one?
I can speak to it actually, 'cause I've been...
Yeah, why don't you give us a quick update on what the difference is, and then we can go from there.
In a nutshell, the, um, I think as originally proposed, uh... Uh, it, it was, uh, the law addressed ATVs and e-bikes, and, and this new draft largely takes out the e-bikes and focuses on ATVs and off-road vehicles. Other than that, it, it, uh, it takes a lot of the, the, the old proposed law had a lot of... Some of the definitions weren't, weren't quite as clear as they could be, so that in this new version, it, it takes them directly from the state motor vehicle law to avoid any confusion.
No planning concerns? No planning concerns?
Nope.
I have one quick question on that. So typically in town, you're not supposed to ride a bicycle on a sidewalk. Certainly not an e-bike. That's not addressed in here. That's a separate part of the, the, uh...
Yeah, and this is, at the risk of merging board meetings, so that was one of the, that was one of the points that was made at the, uh, the town board meeting where this law was addressed, and, and, uh, and that, that point was noted, that actually, that's exactly right. And so that was what a lot of e-bike proponents thought was, was not, uh, addressed in the previous draft, and that's one of the reasons the decision was made to just take e, e-bikes out of it completely. So this just doesn't, just doesn't address bi, bicycles, e-bikes, regular bicycles, whatever, because the law already says that.
Okay.
All right, Johnson, no planning issues?
No. No planning objection?
No planning objection.
Okay.
Do I have a motion to close the meeting?
Motion.
You want...
All's in favor.
You got someone raising your hand back there.
I think we already, we went through your application already. All right, so I think you could talk to the, the, the planning department on what, what we're doing moving forward. All right?
Thank you.
All's in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you.